I've called to order the March 4th special meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education. This is a meeting held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a community public hearing. There's a time for public comment during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Item 4, which is really up very close to the beginning. So if you would like to make a public comment, please feel free to fill out a public comment card per usual. They're up by the door where you came in. Those will be picked up right after the approval of minutes today. Now if you wouldn't please stand and join me as we present the page of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first order of business is approving the minutes from our February 2nd regular meeting and our February 13th special and closed meeting. So can I please have a motion for those approvals?
I motion that we approve those two meetings.
I second. All right, may I have a roll call vote, please? Yes, Dr. Mishak?
Yes.
Mrs. Damar?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGore?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanck?
Yes.
Ms. Skol?
Yes.
Dr. Fasson?
Yes.
Mrs. Frye?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And we are already up to public comment cards. That moves us in. That was going to go check to see if we had any. Nope, okay, there is no public comment cards filled out, so you will move on and head straight into our candidate interviews. First, I would like to introduce Dave Phillips. He is the person who has been leading the charge here for us with Michigan Leadership Institute. Dave, if you would like to say a few words about how this is going to run tonight?
Sure, just a couple seconds on how we will operate tonight. Two interviews tonight, two interviews tomorrow night, one interview on Wednesday night. When we're done with the first interview tonight, the board will take a short break, five, 10 minutes, come back and have a second candidate. At the end of the interviews tonight, there are two sheets of paper as you came in that are marked with the Michigan Leadership logo in the upper left-hand corner. The full sheet, comments that you would like the board to read on the candidates that have been interviewed tonight. They will all spend time after the second interview tonight, reading these, passing them back and forth and so forth, so they'll see those tonight. This half-sheet, if you have a further question or two that you would like to ask each candidate, potentially in the second round, please submit those and I will take those as I compose the second round of interview questions. So this one I will take at the end of the evening. The board will have these to review for your comments. Please remember, this is not a political debate, so no oohing and aahing and cheering and things like that, please. Proper decorum. I've never had a problem in 50 of these, so I certainly don't expect a problem out of Forest Hills, all right? Board of Education, any questions before we get started? Okay. I'll bring our first candidate forward then. I would like to introduce Mr. Ben Kirby to the Board of Education and to the audience. He comes to us as the sitting superintendent of Lake Orion, Michigan. Thank you.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, absolutely. On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to welcome you to Forest Hills Public Schools. To describe again, although Mr. Phillips already did, a little bit about the format that tonight, the interview may take up to 75 minutes, depends on how long the answers are, and I know Mr. Phillips will try to keep us all on track so that we don't run over. Toward the end, you will be able to have a chance to ask the board questions, and you will have an opportunity to make a closing statement if you so desire. All right, so with that being said, choosing our next superintendent is a responsibility of critical importance to this board. We know that being the superintendent of a K through 12 public school is an enormous and a unique job. We need to find the right person for this moment and the future to lead our district. We're ready and excited to learn as much about you as we can during this interview process. The board's appreciated the input of our staff and our community throughout this as we've made it to this point, so thank you very much for that. And with that, I will start off with the very first question for you.
Okay, thank you.
While we have had the opportunity to review your application materials, audience members have not. Can you please briefly review your background and share what causes you to be interested in this position at this point in your career?
Yes, certainly, and thank you very much for taking the time to meet with me here tonight on this beautiful West Michigan evening, and thank you to everybody that is here as well. I would like to start off with the personal side. My lovely wife and extremely patient wife is in the back there in the green with the smile. She's incredibly patient and supportive of me as I have gone through this journey in education. We've been married for 30 years this summer. Gosh, as I say that, I almost feel old saying that out. But we have three wonderful children, two of which live about 20 minutes from here. Both of them have been married in the last few years and had the privilege of marrying them. Actually, appreciating their weddings, and it was definitely an honor for me. Our youngest, our princess, Taylor, graduates next year from Michigan State. She is going to be graduating with a degree in marketing. Our parents still live over here. Our kids live here, and obviously, like I said, my daughter is graduating. She's going to be looking for a position over this way as well. So West Michigan is home, and that is really what draws me back here with this particular position. Throughout my career, I've constantly supported and emphasized family first, and this was really what brought me here, is this is what's best for my family, for us to be on the west side of the state where we belong, where we plan to finish our lives, which that almost sounds weird, but that is what we intend to do. And so that's what brings me to West Michigan. And as far as the professional side, I'm a lifelong educator. I was born and raised northeast of here, just about 30 minutes. I started my teaching career at Sandy Montcalm Middle School, 6th grade, so it feels very good to be in a 5, 6 building. So I then moved to Ionia and taught 6th grade for four years, and then I was the assistant principal at the same middle school for five years, the principal for a year, high school, middle school principal for a year, high school principal for the following three, and then the associate superintendent for 11 years. And when I was the associate superintendent, I had a great opportunity to learn all about the districts, how things run. So I was in charge of human resources, I was in charge of curriculum instruction, assessment, professional learning, state and federal programs. So over those 11 years, I really had a great opportunity to experience everything that a school district has and to provide leadership. Also during that timeframe is when I really started to think about those next steps as being a superintendent. And in order to learn more about that, I did the SUPS Academy that Michigan Leadership Institute puts on, and then also the MASA Horizons Academy, which also does a superintendent preparation program. And going through that, it made me realize there's more out there than Ionia and a medium-sized district, and I wanted to learn more. I wanted to be a superintendent, but I didn't want to be a superintendent in five different school districts and to work my way through. I wanted to be very selective in the positions that I took. I decided at that point to look in either Kent County or in Oakland County, based on the sizes of the school districts. At that time, there were no openings in HR, and that's really what I was looking for. In Kent County, there were four in Oakland County. I applied for the one that fit my values and my need for that family feeling, and that was South Lion, and I was there. I was fortunate to get that job right away, first go at it, and we started down that road for two and a half years. I was in charge of all human resources and communications, so that was a great experience for me. While I was there, I also was the, I oversaw transportation, which is always fun, especially in these short days, and then I also oversaw athletics in both of the high schools and the two middle schools as well. So again, great experience. From there, it helped me build some relationships. I had an opportunity to interview for the South, excuse me, the Lake Orion Community Schools' superintendent position, which I have held that for the last four years. It's been nothing short of amazing. We've had some great growth, great relationships with my board. We've accomplished a lot, completed strategic planning, increased student voice, staff voice, as well as creating an aspiring leaders workshop and many partnerships within the community. So working in that central office position for 16 years, I got to see a lot of leadership styles. Some I will emulate, some I definitely won't, but that has helped grow me as to who I am, but I'm certainly interested in coming back home to West Michigan. When I look at Forest Hills, it is a district that is very similar to the districts in which I've been serving. On Oakland County, you look at the sizes, the demographics, the expectations, and the culture and the climate, they're very similar, and that's what brings me here. I love the fact that I get to be a superintendent in a public school, and I really look forward to the opportunity to be the superintendent here at Forest Hills. And as your superintendent, I will honor the past and as we grow forward in the future.
Given your research and what you know of our district, what do you believe are the two or three most critical long-term priorities that we will need to address? Like, how would your background and skills help us address these priorities?
So two to three priorities? Okay. I think there's, it's hard to totally say for sure, but I have certainly talked to a lot of people and done some research. So I think the financial, the financial state of the district is something that is going to be top of mind for me, and I'm sure that it is for you as well. Obviously, enrollment's tied to that, the fund balance is tied to that, how schools are funded is tied to that. That certainly is one, you know, right from the get-go, and I look over the last four years, the fund balance is going down, people enrollment's going down, obviously, that's all part of the equation. So that definitely is a big one. I think the staff shortage with some of our support staff here at Forest Hills is definitely something that is of a concern. When I look at who typically serves in those types of positions, I think that it makes sense, and I understand it, but we have to figure out a way to, you know, really make sure that we're fulfilling all the services that are necessary to have the great public schools that we want. You know, I think that there are some other things as far as the school district, and there are a lot of great things, and I think that it's hard to give you a whole lot, but those are a couple that really pop out at me that I think are going to need to be focused as we move forward. And I guess I should say, to answer the question fully, as far as experiences, I've had oversight of transportation in some of these positions, and in our strategic plan currently, we're really looking at how to recruit, retain employees, and we've really put some strategies in place, you know, as well as aspiring leaders for certified staff and so on. That is something that has been, you know, good work that we're accomplishing, and then also around the budget. We're constantly talking about budget. This whole ESSER funding was outstanding, yet problematic for school districts, and I have looked at the ESSER dashboard and recognize how this district has spent that, spent those funds. I know how we spend our funds. We knew where the challenges were. We addressed the needs. We did not bank that money. We spent that money. We felt that was responsible to do. And we're constantly, weekly, talking about our budget, and then we actually just had our budget workshop as we go through your forecast, moving into, you know, the budget season.
All right, so effective and timely communication is vital to the success of a school district. Wondering if you could describe the type of communication students, staff, and parents should expect to receive from you?
As I mentioned, I think it's important to understand history, and so what has been effective, I think is very important, and I know we have, you know, communications department. One of the things that I put into place when I was in South Lion, when I first got there, there was no communication to staff, no regular communication, and minimal communication to families, quite frankly. So we put in a quarterly newsletter to staff to really keep them in tune with what is happening in the school district. We also did that in Lake Orion as well. We had a teaching and learning newsletter, nothing from HR, nothing from finance, nothing from the superintendent. So we have now integrated that all into a monthly communication that goes out to the school district. Oftentimes, mine is a video, just so it's more personal and those kinds of things, and trying to highlight some of the things that are in this, what can be an extensive newsletter. As far as families, when I started, we were in the height of COVID. Families needed regular communication. We were at every week. We were communicating out to families, giving them those updates. We've turned that back to somewhere between two and four, two and four weeks as far as communication, but part of the reason that we've done that is because at the building levels, we do have weekly communication, so we don't want to over-saturate the communication. As far as students, you know, it's really important to me to be visible and to be out there, and it's something that I really enjoy doing. I have a student advisory meeting. I know there is one here as well that the board, I think, facilitates, but I meet with, and we have one high school currently in Lake Orion, a large high school, 2,200 students. We have a lot of great leaders, but what we did is we personally, or we purposefully chose students that aren't represented and don't have a voice. And what I mean by that is, you know, we have a leadership class. It's amazing. We didn't need a bunch of leadership students because they already have a voice. So we really tried to, as we did the application, you know, they're writing all the great things that they're doing, which was wonderful, but that really wasn't like helping them get on that particular committee because we wanted some other voices as well. So having those types of communication, as far as regular communications, it's me being visible. There are times through social media, I'm communicating out as we're celebrating, doing some things in the school district. They see that. We recognize that, you know, which platforms they use and so on, and our communication director does a good job of that as well. So students, staff, and then parents. I think I covered each of those. Don't want anything about board communication right now?
Sure.
Okay, so I can, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a question later on it. So as far as board communication, obviously, that's really key. So what's really worked for me is understanding my board. So during the transition, when I initially did my transition, actually, both of the Oakland school districts, I had an 90-day plan where I actually intentionally communicated, and so having those meetings with the board, not only how often do you want communication, but how do you want communication? I have some that want, you know, daily contact, and I have some that if the building's on fire, let me know, but do it in a text message, you know? So there's just different needs that everybody has, and it's just really important that I understand that. So currently, with the way that we work now, our cadence is every week I do an email out, typically on Friday, and then anything in between that happens, I communicate out, you know, if it's something that's urgent. I also have meetings each month with groups of two and three with the school board, where we actually sit down and talk about things that are top of heart and mind for them, as well as me giving some updates that may not be board-level decisions, but just letting them know what's happening. So we have workshops and so on as well, so I'm sure we'll get into that a little bit more, so I don't want to elaborate too much, but the board communication is very effective as well.
Excellent. Next question. What do you think are the unique challenges of leading a district with three unique high schools, and how would you address those challenges?
So again, an honor in the past. I think it's really important to recognize what is working, what I believe currently is that they really have their own programs and that they have their separate communities, and I think that that is, that's just my current research, but as I transition, I certainly will be asking a lot of questions to better understand that. I think it's important to understand what we want from a high school graduate. So whether that be, I know we have the guiding principles here, but whether that be that we create a graduate profile, the graduate profile, the learner that we want when a student is done here at Forest Hills, all of these characteristics, and that's at all three high schools, and that, you know, would feed through all of the particular schools, whether it be elementary, middle, and high, but when you actually create a profile of a graduate, and it's something that I need to learn more about, and I want to learn more about, and it's going to happen either in Lake Orion, or it'll be exposed here as an opportunity if we do move forward, because I do think it's great work and helps us keep focused. So I think it's just really important to understand what we currently have. Is it working? Is it meeting the needs of the community, of the board, and the students? I know we have, it's 94%, 97% that go on after high school. Some things are working really well. Some things you don't, you know, need to upset, and I think that's the piece that is really important. There's a lot of great things going on. I'm not going to come in and move everything out of the way, and this is how you do it. I think it's important to understand what's working well, but still ask that question of why are we doing this? Because I think sometimes when you have a really, really good school district, a really, really good organization, if you don't ask why enough, you lose track of getting better. And I don't want to get complacent, regardless of where I'm at.
Thank you. Can you please give us an example of a successful educational initiative or program you have initiated in your career, and what were their results?
You know, different responsibilities have different workflows and so on. I think that we have a big one going on right now at our high school. Again, it's a very large high school, 2,200 students. We have a ton of great programs, but again, there's the complacency because they're always doing the same thing over and over. So when I first got there, I started asking questions. Yes, we have 150 offerings, but do our families know that, and how do they know that? So to kind of get to that, what I've been doing over the last two years, we've really been focusing on the student achievement, so the AP testing, things of that nature, because when you look at, you know, world news and reports, that's the one thing that really brings us down, is our AP testing participation. And so when I asked those questions, they really didn't have an idea as to what was going on with, why students weren't taking AP tests and so on. So we really started to dig into that. We started to dig into student achievement, how it is that our high school knows that they're doing what they want to be doing through student achievement, and then what we're doing when they're not being successful. So where I'm going with this is that we are building an NTSS program at the high school level, which is not easy. It's a very daunting task, but we have a team that is just digging in, and I really think that it's going to be a model that we're going to be able to share with other high schools as we continue to enroll this. We have a product called EduClimber that goes with our gradebook, and we can just simply with a snapshot, see the learner and see the social emotional scores, their academic scores. Everything's right there, so we know where the students are and how to address their needs and so on. So that is future and current work that we're doing. When I was in, when I was in Ionia, I had a responsibility around curriculum and instruction, and one of the things that we did there, again, that's a different school district, 65% free and reduced lunch, so there was a lot of Tier 2 and Tier 3 needed to help support learners. So what we ended up doing is we put a program in called Just Write Instruction. And so what the Just Write Instruction did is it intentionally used our interventionist, which we had multiples, I don't know why that keeps happening, I apologize. We had multiple interventionists at each level, and they were, they were working at the grade levels, and so what we did is we took them and we started to pod them for 30 minutes at a time. So we used our Renaissance Learning STAR testing and actually created groups based on the skills that the students were deficient in, and that group of interventionists then moved grade level to grade level to grade level, and we did that every single day. So the name Just Write Instruction, that means they don't do speech during that time, they don't get pulled out, they don't go to the library, there's no interruption. For 30 minutes, we had five groups, excuse me, six groups, two grade levels, and the interventionists, they broke the children down into groups, and then every, I believe it was every six weeks, we adjusted, so then their new level of learning and skills that were necessary to remediate or to strengthen was then emphasized. So that was called Just Write Instruction. So we did that at the elementary level. We also implemented some supports at the high school, and called that the Achiever, and what that was, it's Achiever, but it really wasn't an hour, but it was tied to lunch, so you could get there. But what it did is it gave students during the school day an opportunity to go where they needed to go in order to get the support that they needed. So they might have needed to go to science, might have even gone to math, but they had the ability to go during that time that was tied to their lunch and so on. But we had to do that during the day because you can't say, in the climate and culture we were working on, the demographic, you got to stay after school. Your teacher's going to stay after school, we're going to pay him X number of dollars. They couldn't. They needed the bus. So that particular strategy was utilized, and frankly, in a district like that, you're going to need to do something like that during the school day, for sure. So those would be a couple of examples that I can share.
Thank you. What opportunities do you believe budget limitations present? In tough financial times, what are your top three priorities?
People are really good at identifying where there's overspending, but they don't identify at home where there's overspending. So what I've experienced is, and I've gone through this a couple of different, in two of the three school districts, is identifying where they think that things should be cut, but it's typically not in their building, it's at the high school, or it's at the middle school, or wherever I'm at. But what that does is it does generate some ideas and some thinking and so on, and I think that that's something that I have experienced and gone through, again, both in Ionia and in South Lion as far as making budget reduction. But I think as far as prioritizing, student learning obviously is key. That's what we're here for, that's what we're going to do, that's what we need to make sure that we focus on. But there are other things, you know, as well. We've got to, you know, with student learning, there's safety. I think that that is something that's really important. So we can't compromise building relationships and helping students feel safe at school at the sake of having low class levels, for example. It's all interwoven, so I think school safety is another, student learning would be one, for sure. And then I think you also have to really look at, you know, not being short-sighted, so looking for the long term as far as priorities. So there are some short-term strategies, like buyouts, for example. That's a good short-term strategy, but that's not going to help you in the long term. Sorry if that is an idea that somebody was hoping. Sorry if that is an idea that somebody was hoping for down the road, but that is, you know, something that doesn't yield long-term, you know, results. So I think that that's something, as well as to not create legacy costs. So it's the flip side, it's not necessarily cutting, but it's just being thoughtful about what costs you're adding as well. So I think you definitely need to prioritize that as well.
Okay, Ben, over here, with respect to our planning process and setting direction for our district, how do you propose we involve our stakeholders, our community members, our students, our staff, our parents?
So to make sure I heard you right, you said planning process.
Setting direction.
Drawing like strategic planning, right? So, okay. So that is, that is something that I wonder about in this district. Obviously, there's guiding principles, and again, just fantastic results, outstanding school district. But in my research, my understanding is that you have gone down the road a little bit with strategic planning, and you have stopped at the implementation part of it, which I don't question, don't understand, but there was reason for it. And so that's something during my transition that I would better try to understand it. So to answer your question, that would be one of the wonders that I had, how were they involved to begin with as that was built and created? How we did it in our school district is we actually used Maspe. They came in and they helped us facilitate alongside with me our strategic plan. And so we actually had, you know, small group meetings as far as getting feedback and so on, as far as what they want to see in a school district. But we also spent a Saturday at the Orion Township Center with 45 of us. And there were parents, there were staff, there were, we had two students that were invited as well. And we went through it for a full hour and really came up with five big buckets that we would address. And there was a lot of that feedback was generated at that time. So when we actually finalized it, presented it to the board, invited those people to come to the board meeting, there was much less participation in that than there was the actual voice on that Saturday. And then what we do as far as accountability and ensuring, and as far as circling back, is every year we report out three times of the work that we're doing with the strategic plan. And that, I think, is important too, as far as the communication, not only getting the feedback, but now you're reporting back, this is what we're doing. These were the things that you thought that we should do, these are the things that we're doing, these are the things we're doing in year two, we're doing in year three, year four, year five, whatever, you know, our goals are timeframe-wise. So I think it's getting it, intentionally listening. Again, I think it's really important to understand where we've been, but I do think it's important that everybody has that. And then disclosure with that, with the reporting back.
Thanks. Would you please describe your leadership experience with diverse constituents, such as social, cultural, economic diversity? And tell us about how you've worked to develop educational equity and a culture of inclusion for all?
There's a lot of bigger words than buzzwords in there, there's a lot. So similar to this district, the equity inclusion is something that we were doing prior to it becoming so popular. In our school district, we've really worked hard around, you know, reducing barriers, amplifying voice. I think that's really important. And again, I talked about that a little bit with my student group that I'm dealing with, is really trying to uplift those voices that aren't typically heard. We did a book study in our district, culturally responsive teaching and the brain. And that was, not my mouthful, but that was really impactful for our staff because it really helped them reflect on, you know, who they are, what was important to them, and things that they do and don't recognize. And so they actually created goals for themselves annually to try to grow. And a lot of them, what they were trying to do is just trying to understand the demographics within their building because all of our demographics aren't the same, not even in a school district. So we have neighborhood buildings, we have, you know, a high Indian population in one building, but we don't have any in another building. Well, our state in elementary needs to understand how to work with that population. We have a Title I building that is different than our building that has very few free and reduced lunch. Of course, everybody gets a free now, but that qualifies for it. So that was really important to us, that we really focus on what it is that we're doing with the students we're serving within our community. And also having that worldly view in how we've handled diversity and equity and inclusion is by having representatives at each level. And so they meet monthly, they communicate out, sometimes it's communicating out about a culture. So we would have what we call Thoughtful Thursdays, where we actually put out emails and just told about a culture and just described it. Nothing actionable for everybody to do necessarily, but it was a matter of informing and helping people understand the different cultures that we're serving and so on. So it's something that we've really worked hard to include everybody. And I think that it was kind of heartwarming, in my last meeting that I had with my student advisory, we gave them, they had the opportunity, their homework was to bring back three things that were on their heart and mind and that they really wanted to focus on. And one of the top three things of that group of students, 14 high school students who don't have a big voice, they wanted to have more special education involvement in sports. And we have a unified basketball team, and we have unified robotics. They wanted to try to figure out ways that they could expand that. And that was really great, there were students coming up with that. But that's an example of, again, giving voice and allowing them. And so now that's going to be our task over the next few months, is what does that look like? And how can we support your, this particular goal? Last thing that we did, that I guess I would mention, is that we didn't used to do, and I did not do research on this, so I may be saying something I shouldn't, but we are doing experiences in other countries. So we are allowing up to two trips a year, basically it's out of the high school, you know, whether it's the Spanish club and whatnot. But we are allowing that. We haven't in over a decade had any experiences where our students to go across seas and to learn about different cultures with our staff. But that's something that we thoughtfully move forward with, again, to try to expand. And certainly, we also added, which we didn't have before, the seal by literacy. We didn't have that before, and I think that came in my second year, so that's when we put that in.
All right, thank you. What has been the most unpopular administrative decision you've ever had to make? And how did you handle the reaction to this decision?
Oh, well, this never happened. So I think a couple of things come to mind. One, again, large high school, on the same campus, we have a middle school, Scripps Middle School. Our learning option, which is an alternative center, is there as well. Traffic is a bear, as you can imagine, they all start within a half an hour. By the way, there's an elementary right down the road too. So since COVID, a lot of students drive now instead of riding in the bus. So you can just imagine the number of vehicles coming in and out in a short period of time. So we had a great idea, and it really was a good idea, it might work someday. But at any rate, we were going to follow the research and start our high school a little bit later. And so we had a representative group, that we threw some ideas behind. We were going to start a high school sometime between 8:15 and 8:30. Or you know, finally got to the point where you realized how this was going to work. Because that was, you know, a big piece around the high school, starting later and the sports and so on. So we really did some work around starting them later. Our middle school really wasn't going to be affected, but our elementaries were all going to start around nine o'clock. So again, we had our group that we were talking through, and everybody thought it was a good idea. So before we moved it out, what I said is we need to get full staff and full parent feedback to make sure that we're not missing anything. So we threw out a model. That model was exactly what I just said, 8:15 start, nine o'clock start for the elementaries. All of them currently right now, half of them start earlier, half of them start later. So we did a thought exchange, think for a moment, a thought exchange? Okay, so basically, it's an open forum where they just talk about ideas, you throw out a question, and then parents or whoever's getting the thought exchange gives their feedback. The bottom line is the families weren't ready, and even the staff fully weren't ready to make that move. So we ultimately didn't make the change. And so we really kind of got down that road, but thoughtfully brought it back because families weren't ready, staff wasn't ready. And so we kind of diverted probably what would have been a very difficult time. One that we did move forward with that wasn't so popular was, again, we talked, I talked about that elementary building that we had a lot of Indian families. We have three middle schools. Our population at the three middle schools was way off Oakview, which is the one that's kind of outside of our boundaries, at the edge of our boundary, was really small. Like we have class sizes that are 15, 18, and that's not necessarily a celebratory point. Staff loves it and all of that, but when we talk about efficiencies and things, we have to think about those things. So we actually moved the subdivision that was at the Stadium Elementary. We moved that to Oakview from what was at Scripps. Well, Scripps is right by Stadium, they knew no different, right? So they were very comfortable with families that we hadn't moved. So we did move that, and thankfully, it has worked out very well. We're within, I just looked at it today, I think we're within 60 with our populations at all three buildings, so very good. But there were families that just weren't happy about it, you know, it was change. They had children that went through, you know, Scripps Middle School, you know, and now they got to go through Oakview. And oh, by the way, there's a dirt road for 10, you know, a tenth of a mile, and they don't like that either. So we kind of navigated through that. But what we did is there was a group that was unhappy about it. So what we did is we brought them in, showed them a map, we explained to them, showed them different routes, because they thought it was going to take an hour and 15 minutes to get to where they had to go, and I'm not sure how they got there. But at any rate, we showed them some routes to get there, showed them how this was beneficial for the district, how our programming is the same in each of our middle schools. And ultimately, we were able to take that group of about 14 that came, and they understood. And ultimately, philosophically, I think you have to, you know, hear whispers, so you don't have to listen to the screams. Thankfully, we did not have a single board comment about that move. But it wasn't a popular one, but it was one that we worked our way through and navigated. And I think it was successful because we were able to let people share their voices and be heard. Ultimately, we weren't all on the same page, but we did move forward. And quite honestly, those families are very happy where they're at currently, and we're happy as a school district.
Thank you. What role does a school district play in student mental health and wellbeing? And please describe for us your experience in these areas specifically.
Yeah, so mental health and wellbeing is, it's absolutely essential. We talked a little bit about the AP, if I could just go to that quickly. And part of the reason our students were taking those high level AP courses, their main reason was stress. And I think that's really important. We have added, I want to say 16 social workers over the last few years to support our social emotional needs. We've been able to use grant funding to pay for those things, not SRF, but different grant funding, 310, 31AA, different alphabets there. But we've been able to support that, it's essential. We also just added CareSalus as a partner. CareSalus is a program that helps families get to providers. So that is the most difficult, sorry, Dr. Mashad, that is the most difficult piece is when they actually get in the system, is navigating the system. They don't get the call back, or they don't know who to call. But CareSalus, we do what's called a warm handoff. They actually make all the phone calls for those families, and they get them to the providers, and they remind them of the appointments. And they let us know that, yes, they have followed through and those kinds of things. We don't find out what it is that they're being treated for and those kinds of things. So it's incredibly imperative. Ultimately, it makes a difference in whether or not we're successful with their teaching and learning, if they're not supported with their wellbeing.
Great. Next question is what strategies have you used to recruit and retain diverse and talented staff teaching and administrative employees?
So we have, we have really worked hard to have competitive contracts for one. I mean, that is a big piece of it, and just recognizing, you know, who is at the table. That is something we also have been conscious of is when we're actually interviewing, who is at the table? What representation do we have across the district? So that, you know, minorities might feel comfortable at the interview table because they have a minority that is sitting there helping with the interview process. We've actually had the old school job fairs within the community, and that's more like the support of the staff. We are lucky in the respect that we continue to have people that come to Lake Orion, just like here in Forest Hills. I know we get fewer applications here in Forest Hills, but you're still getting a lot of really good applications. But one of the things that we do that sets us apart as far as attracting is that we are super supportive of our staff when we get them. So as they come in, the first year, you know, there's four days of training right up front. We have instructional coaches that walk throughout their first couple of years. Each month they're in, they're visiting, they're supporting, they're helping them with instruction. We have the department chairs also that are there to support. So they're getting that constant support during the school day with instruction. And that is a cultural piece that people love. And so really building from within, we get a lot of referrals from our staff because of the supports that we put into place, and that's really important. The other thing that we do, and we just actually had our aspiring administrators cohorts, who are actually, through our strategic plan, we've created an aspiring administrators cohort. And again, that's about retention, we want to build these leaders and keep our leaders within. We've been working really hard to give different leadership opportunities. One of the disadvantages of that is they may go to other districts as well. And that's okay, because I think we need great people in education. And I just soon see people that we are impacting continuing to lead in other districts rather than that at all. So we have that going, and we, our anticipation is next year to start getting into a central office cohort. So we have a tremendous leadership team now, building principals, who's interested in being a superintendent, an assistant superintendent, those types of positions. So that's what we're building back, because again, we want to build that capacity. We're in a really good spot right now, quite frankly, as far as succession planning. I've been very intentional about that, not only, you know, backfilling into positions and making sure people are ready, but also understanding what it is that we do in the next department over in our central offices, so to speak. We have position templates that actually list out month by month what the major tasks are, so then we can share and make sure that we help each other and see how our work impacts, you know, the other departments. Called the lottery effect, win the lottery, they may not show up, but we need to know how to do the work. So we've been doing that as well. So the other thing I would say is I did a market analysis, also looking at peers as to where we're at with compensation, not only with our professional staff. You can use the data analytics systems, the EMEA metrics, to just see how you compare and what your instructional costs are. I also did that with our central office as well, and that helped inform some decisions that we were making around, you know, pay schedules, additional positions, reducing positions, those kinds of things as well.
This is a little bit of a wordy question.
Okay.
So in Forest Hills, we believe in offering quality programs in everything we do, including the arts, curate technical, athletics, et cetera. Have you developed curriculum and opportunities for students that equitably meet their needs while also maintaining quality through all of the programming?
Yeah, there's a lot there. So it is essential to know our individual learners, and I think that's the real key. And again, knowing, whether it be through, you know, student advisories and whatnot, but knowing what the student interests are. You know, most have their EVPs, where you can actually, they actually have to tell what their interests are. They do that early on in their educational career, and that is an identifier as to what their interests are with careers and courses and so on. And that is a great indicator, because ultimately, we're here to serve students, and we need to listen to those voices as to what it is that to listen to those voices as to what it is that they want to be able to do. So I think that is really key, to just understand what the students want. And it's not just about, you know, the high school request and those kinds of things that occur, but what is in their career plan, so that we know that we are actually getting them to where they want to be in their EDPs. And there's, I know we have a program in place here for that, for sure. CTE athletics, again, the same thing as far as the CTE, because that's gonna come out in those interest-type surveys. Athletics, I know we have tremendous, you know, offerings. And again, as far as the equity, it's about reducing barriers and just making sure that all students that want to participate are first aware. There's so many things that we don't, or that maybe we take, you know, for granted, that students know that this is when you start out with basketball, or you start with crew, or you start with lacrosse, and all of a sudden, the season's there, and everybody that's been playing club and all those other things, they all are aware. But a student may have no idea, and then all of a sudden, the program's going on. So what is it that we're doing at the beginning of, you know, years, seasons? We need to make sure we're communicating out. I think that helps as far as the equity and reducing some barriers. And then the quality, I think it's really important that you're constantly, again, asking the question, why? And are we accomplishing what we're trying to accomplish? Whether that is the athletic directors doing evaluations of their respective programs. CTE has their own advisory, you know, if we run our own CTE programs here, there's gonna be an advisory board asking the question, are we doing the things that are necessary for our students to be successful in that field? Those are feedback loops that we definitely need to make sure that we listen to as well.
All right. Please describe your experiences with millage renewals, bond proposals, and sinking funds. Were these experiences successful? Why or why not?
So I have spent a significant amount of time, we just had a replacement non-Homestead millage and a replacement sinking fund millage. So, and I'm happy to say that they both passed. That was just recently, February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four. So what that looked like for me is, I was the face. I was going out, I was doing community presentation, staff presentation videos. We met once a week, myself, my executive assistant, my communications director, and supports. We talked about events that were going on. Our team actually put in, like, big events that they had, so that we had representation to make sure we were, you know, sharing the information, had it boards up. Really explaining school finance is really key as you go through these, whether they're millages, the bonds, whatever it is when we're talking. And we did two of them, which probably not a great idea, but it was a great idea because we needed them both, and people need to understand school finance, so we did it at one time, and that's why we did that. So yes, when I was in South Lion, I was at the onset of the planning of their bond. In Ionia, I was there for the successful bond, actually had the privilege of helping design the football stadium. And then we have currently a hundred and sixty million dollar bond that we're working on. Reason we did replacements is because it offered us more opportunities through the technology and the transportation cost to the sinking fund. I know we don't have a sinking fund here, but that was expanded, that's why we did the replacement, so that we could go under the new rules. And we did the replacement non-Homestead, because we didn't want to have that heavily override tick down below the eighteen mils and not get the amount of money necessary for our funding. So a lot of experience with it. You know, Matt, I'm happy to say that the last two were successful, and that's gone well. I think this is what...
Could you please provide us with an example of a time in your career when you made a mistake, received constructive feedback, and were asked to take corrective action? What process and communication plan did you implement, and what was the outcome?
Just to be clear, what do you mean by a mistake?
Any sort of error, whether it be an error in judgment, an error in filing some paperwork, any sort of error that comes to mind?
My pause on that is, again, I think of, I've been very fortunate, and part of it maybe is my ability to compartmentalize, but quite frankly, I haven't had situations where I've been in that situation, but I will say that I'm very reflective, and I'm constantly looking at the decisions that I'm making and how to grow. But I wish I could give you an example. The example I gave you about the decision that we made with the boundaries, you know, was one, I think my board would tell you that I'm constantly, you know, looking to grow, and I'm open to getting feedback. I guess I'm thankful to say there hasn't ever been such a heinous situation that I really had to experience what you're saying.
That's fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. How would you evaluate the climate and culture of our district, knowing what you know right now? And how does superintendent help to improve the climate and culture?
So I certainly think that the climate and culture is one that's very positive, and again, until you live it and you're part of it, and again, with the transition, I really will have a better sense of that. I've talked with parents, I've talked with administrators, I've talked with central office people. Everybody's very positive and enjoys working here, and I think that that's really the scope that I'm seeing at this point. I really haven't had the privilege of talking to students at this point. I think that is something that is really, really important, really understanding, you know, how they feel while they're at school every single day. I think that is really important. And as a superintendent, what my role is, is really setting the stage. It's about building relationships, it's about being visible, it's about making sure that we're treating people with dignity, whether it's a student, whether it's a staff member, whether it's, you know, colleague, colleague, whether it's parents. You know, that's, I need to set the stage, and I need a model. I need a model, what it is like to be a great person, the guiding principles that this district believes in. I need a model of those things. And that is part of what I do as a superintendent, is really setting that stage. If I could go back, so I thought a little bit about that. I'm not sure how I did that, you know, two times. That's good, and I'm happy with myself. But one thing I would think about is, I can recall one time that I had, I'm showing some vulnerability here, but that is who I am as well. We had a staff opening, and we were having a great time, and it was really good. And I was looking for an administrator, and that administrator was sitting in the area that we actually had marked off for nobody to sit. So that was the last place I was looking, because, right, everybody follows the rules. That's how it works. Well, once I saw that he was there, my quick wit went to, sure, sure, that's where Dave, the administrator, is sitting over there, where he shouldn't be, where we told everybody not to sit, you know, just kind of jokingly, and that wasn't exactly what I said, but that was the gist of it. And then I realized that wasn't, that was sarcastic, that didn't put him in good light, and so I apologized in front of everybody that I said that. So nobody told me that, but that was something that I self-reflected on as it happened. It was like, ooh, that didn't feel good for him. So I guess that would be an example, if I could go back.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Now, you actually touched on this earlier, but would you please explain to us what your plan would be to implement a strategic plan?
I know it's invaluable for me. I know that the previous two superintendents have been here for thirty-seven years, guiding principles have really given the direction. Again, I think it's important to honor the past. I know some work has been done. I think that we need to have a focus, and that that focus is through a strategic plan, and we're ready to do that, I'm all for moving forward in that regard. If this is, and I'm assuming that's, I don't know, you know, again, I don't know all of the, you know, why it is where it is. Some work has been accomplished there. I would think, as far as our strategic plan, as I learn in my transition plan, my ninety-day plan, is to understand where it's at, why it stopped, what the goal is of this board. But I think also, as a superintendent, I want to know more about the district before I really steer a strategic plan. I think it's really important, so I would, you know, really talk with this board about what their goals are with a strategic plan, because I want to make sure that it's great. But it's hard for me to facilitate and get the work going if I don't necessarily know all of the angles. So I really think it would be responsible to, you know, give it a solid year of learning, and in the meantime, understanding where we've been. I think that that would be really important. I think the bottom line is having a focus on our work.
Okay. Now I have the number one most wordy question, so I'm going to read it. Superintendents are often faced with the challenge of making decisions when there is no clear right answer, and members of the community don't split on the right path forward. Talk about a time when you were faced with a difficult decision, where you knew there would be a group of people unhappy with your decision, no matter what you chose to do. How did you go about making that decision and getting people on board with the direction you determined was best? I know you have the neighborhood example, but maybe there's another one too.
Man, totally took that away from me.
Yep.
I appreciate that.
Of course.
Not a problem. Yeah, we do get faced with a number of difficult situations. This may come up in a future question, but I'm gonna talk about it anyways. You know, November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, twelve-thirty-two, I get a phone call about the Oxford School. We are neighbors, Oxford. My office is just as close to Oxford High School as our own high school. As you can imagine, the emotion around all of that, we quickly identified, now I'm going into it too late, too much, but quickly identified, there was, you know, between fifty and a hundred people right away, we knew had children in that building, or their parents were in that building. So that has a whole dynamic. So the split, where I'm going with that, is that there was, we gotta shut down school. We gotta shut down school right now, like, we can't go to school tomorrow, our high school kids are not safe. And then the other side of it was, we need to continue normalcy, and we need to support students. So as far as the work that we did, we, you know, taken in all the information that we could in that particular situation, in that quick situation, and it was a long night, and it went deep into the night. We immediately communicated out what happened, you know, did the best of our knowledge and ability in what we were doing, so that people knew that we were planning. And as you can imagine, respectfully, there were a lot of opinions coming in about what we should be doing. So we tried to digest and listen to those things and understand. And as we moved forward, we did continue to have school that week. It happened on a Tuesday. We did have school on Wednesday, we did have school on Thursday, and we can get into the, you know, down the road if a question comes up, but I know I want to be respectful of the time. But that was something that, as we went through that, it was all about continuing to listen, because people were scared, understandably. It's really something that shakes you to the core, me and my position, a parent and their position, regardless. So it was on their heart and mind, and we, as high school administrators, middle school administrators, central office, we did a lot of listening and just really trying to soothe and help them understand what's best for their child and their student, is to come up with consistency, maintain the consistency, create safe spaces in our, and it really was our high school, but there were, you know, others at the middle and elementary as well. But really creating, you know, the constant communication with their families. And I think the other piece that is really important is, and we continue to communicate all through the process. So we would give them updates, like, my cabinet team would, came out, like, till like ten o'clock, you know, like, six o'clock, we're giving them an update that this is what we're doing, and, you know, again, more people are pouring in, you know, the information and whatnot. But that is something that still goes through today. I mean, that's ongoing, some people's hearts and minds every day. But that's something, and it's just about continuing to listen and not sharing information to convince them to believe where you're at, but to give them information so that they believe that you have their child at the heart of your decision-making.
Thank you for sharing that example.
Good.
Thank you. What is the biggest risk you have taken to do what's right for children?
I'm glad the pandemic's gone, but there is an example in there. We went through situations where we had to do new things, where we were forced to do new things, and where, when I was in South Lion, we had a situation where feeding was important, feeding children was important. And again, I'm part of the, I was in charge of communications as well as human resources, and we, early on, were communicating, and it was imperative to me that children were being fed. And we had a population that needed to be fed. So the responsibility for the communication kept me involved with food service. And so the idea of them getting meals delivered to them, handed off to them, was supposed to happen. So we had a delay, and we had a delay, and we had a delay. And so, again, in my role, I've got to communicate out to families, but I don't have anything to communicate out, because the food service director isn't giving us information. So talked to the superintendent, like, this is a dilemma, so I said, I'm gonna find out what's went on. Well, I got in touch with the food service director, and the food service director decided that instead of feeding children, they were gonna donate all the food that they had to the food pantry and let children go to the food pantry. And I was like, no, that's not what we're doing. We're a school district, and we are gonna feed these children. And so, but I don't have enough staff, no problem. Then that is something that we need to overcome. If you need ten more people, I'll put out volunteers right now, because our staff wasn't working in person, and we put out volunteers, we had more than enough staff. Myself, I went and I actually delivered, I volunteered to actually go to the homes and deliver on porches of those that currently had COVID, but we knew that they had the meal. We got a hold of the health department, said, you know, this is the dilemma, we know we've got, you know, these ten homes, they have people in them that have COVID, they need meals, we know they need five, and so on. So, you know, pack them up in the truck, go to their houses, put them on the porch, end up calling them, telling them that they're there. But that was a leaderless risk on my part, because I had somebody that was in charge of a department, but I had to, you know, take my shared leadership, which is my typical, and be adaptive and say, no, that's not right. We're not just gonna give the food away and make families come get the food. We need to do that. And so successfully, we gave out thousands of meals for the remainder of the time, and we had a quota system. The food service director was very appreciative and glad, they didn't know how to problem-solve. That was the bottom line. But by bringing everybody together and getting the volunteers, we had staff, just, it was amazing how people came together to do what was right for kids.
I like this question. If you get to dream big, what would a secondary education look like? And what are the major obstacles you see to achieving that dream?
I like that question. That is a good one, and it is really broad. And I know we have some great programs here, and I know we have some project-based learning, but I really, that is, if you could dream big, reducing the barriers of the assessments that we have to take in the state, getting rid of those, and really working towards, really working towards, I can never be a singer, and I, for whatever reason, it's not working out. Really working towards what is the student's interest and goals, you know, whether it's to be in the medical profession, or if it's to be an age-backed person. And reducing those barriers, creating opportunities. I'd love to see that a portion of the students' day as they get older is actually in the workplace, doing internships, and being okay that we do that from the state, you know, reducing those barriers, and actually having the ability to do that type of work so that our students can be inspired and really reach their dreams. Students know what they want to do, it's just we have this box. So I know there's a lot of work around project-based learning, and I think expanding that so that we can continue to inspire, you know, students with their hopes and their dreams. But I do think, again, it's about listening to students of what it is that they want. But I would also like to remove the timeframe, as I think big, and I didn't think a lot, you know, about this, it is a great question, but just reducing the timeframe and having more flexibility around when they actually come in to learn as well, which obviously comes with some challenges. We know that high school students probably would perform better if they came in later in the day. But again, a lot, there's a lot of, you know, current barriers with what we have. I think that that is yet another opportunity. And I think the other thing that I think would be a great component is, again, dreaming big, is really having our high school students being part of the middle school and elementary experience, so that they are appreciating people, appreciating, you know, where they came from, and really being models. I think that that's really important as far as being a good student. I think that that's really important as far as being a good person is just, is modeling that and being supportive. And I've seen that work in the current high school. Again, we talked about the proximity, they, they actually get into working with the younger children. I think that that is something that would be really beneficial as well.
How do you ensure that people know and understood you have heard them?
Lots of situations, and I, what is important is that you're having, having that contact, that you're using nonverbals, but as far as like a decision, I think that regardless, and I'm thinking that this is a bigger question, so like you've asked for feedback and then they are giving you feedback and then you're making a decision, is how I'm going to approach this, is I think it's important to, like I said earlier, closing that, that loop. So communicating back to people that this is where we're at. So I got all this feedback, this is the decision that we made, and this is how it's best for students. I think it's important that you have, you put closure on that, on that loop whenever you're asking people for, for feedback or doing surveys so that they see what it is, how, maybe even how they thought, they thought that everybody believed the same thing as them, but as they saw the survey results, you know, they were on the island, or yes, they, they were in line with what other people were thinking. I think it's just important for them to understand that. So I think it's important that you circle back and give them, give them the results if you're asking the questions and ultimately explaining your decision. I'm assuming that's what the question is, is really trying to get at.
What do you think are the key elements needed to establish and maintain a good working relationship between you and our board?
Communication, and then communication, and then probably communication. I think those are, that's a key element, right? And so one of the, what we have accomplished with the, with that team of eight is really, really great. So we, we did a workshop. And what we did, we built a social contract. So the social contracts are agreements of behaviors. So we, we actually went through and we talked about, what does it look like? How do you, how do you want to be treated by the board president? How do you want to be treated by the superintendent? How do you want to be treated by each other? How do you want to be treated in times of conflict? And had lots of discussion around that. And then we created, is it trust, is it respect? Well, what does trust mean? What does respect mean? What does being open-minded mean? So those are the things that are on our social contract, and those are the things that we built. And we built that through discussion, and tough, tough discussion, because when I first got there, everybody didn't love each other. Not that everybody, you know, loves each other, huggy and all of that, but everybody really respects each other. And we just actually had a workshop and it was, there was a disagreement, which is totally fine, but somebody didn't behave in the way that they agreed to. And part of having a social contract and in an agreement of a behavior for a team is holding each other accountable as well as yourself. And when you have a social contract, you can address the behavior that you agreed to and that you as a person. That has been really important for us. That is how, how I, you know, interact with them. We also, you know, give feedback as far as like how we did on the social contract, that's another key element to those agreements of behavior. Communication, like I talked about earlier, I gave you what my gates of communication is. It's really important for me to know how you as a board want to be communicated with. Do you really get engaged as to what's important to you? Like, do you want to know every time EMS shows up at a building? Or do you just want to know when it's, you know, not a, not a medical emergency? Like, it takes a while to figure that out, but that is something that is, that is really important because the last thing that I want is any surprises with my board, and I don't want the board to surprise me either. And we are in a really good spot with that. We do communicate well, whether it be a quick phone call, text message, email. And again, we have our regular cadence, the monthly meetings that I shared with our small groups, incredibly powerful. That was a step we added after my first year because they wanted to know more. And it really builds good relationships, and that's what's really, really important. You know, I made sure that I acknowledge everybody and we acknowledge each other when we, you know, are in the room and we're communicating and so on. So anyway, I think I've given enough examples, I might start getting this pretty soon.
Well, you've gotten to the right point. The grilling is officially over. Do you have any questions for us?
So I actually did ask a question before my closing statement.
Yes.
All right, all right, well, good. Very thoughtful questions, for sure, as I, as I prepared for this interview. You know, you thought a lot about my responsibilities and, you know, obviously I have notes that I thought through, but my notes weren't any good for me because it was really about what was on the, on the heart when you guys asked the question. They were very thoughtful questions, so thank you for that. This is a big question, and I like this question. So here's my question. If the school district was running perfectly, what would it look like from your perspective?
That's a great question. And you know there'd be different perspectives.
Yeah, I think, yeah, you would get some different answers, I think.
Edit.
Do you want me to say one?
Go for it.
This is just, you know, to borrow your phrase, top of mind. So I'm sure there's probably more that I would say if I was given more time to think about this, but from a parent perspective, if the school district was running perfectly, I think the communication would be incredibly robust. One of the things you said that I really liked, and this is just a small thing, but it's very indicative, is you know when new activities are starting. They're not a surprise. There's no surprises. Everyone is very well informed, they have lots and lots of forewarning, they know how it's going to work, they don't have to wonder and ask their neighbors if you've heard anything. And I feel like when you do that, you also are listening to the whispers, like you said, so that you don't have to hear the screams because everyone knows what is coming and they feel confident, even if it's not their first choice.
Sure.
They know, and there's not a lot of surprises.
Thank you.
I like how Maggie brings up from the parent perspective. So I'll throw in another perspective, being somebody who's a teacher and, you know, a board member and a parent here. Yes, Miss Maggie, in a way. In the same ways me. Okay. My thought is really about belonging. If I were to imagine exactly what everything would be like looking and it's, you know, it's running perfectly, it's that everybody, staff in particular, and of course, students are going to feel that as well, feel that they belong, that they're included, that they're acknowledged. And of course, when every child feels seen, I mean, they're going to be seen by others who feel seen. So that goes through the staff as well, up to the administration, that people are recognized. And so they are happy to be a part of something. A well, a beautifully run district is one where people don't want to run away.
Sure.
But that's, and that's involving the community as well, that this is, our schools are part of that belonging and it's, it's formed by the community that we're in. And every step of that school building, people know that people know they're there.
Thank you.
From a board perspective, answer to you, and I'm trying to think of the way to say this, we've been through the craziest five years in public education I think anybody can remember, and it's created new practices and new concerns and some trust issues all over the planet.
Sure.
So in a perfect board table situation, we wouldn't have as much communication from the public. We love the public, we love to hear, but if our systems work incorrectly and our teachers, administrators, coaches, everybody is able to connect with their teachers because they're equipped by their administration to answer questions, then we wouldn't be getting those emails and people coming to the podium and saying, I don't understand. So it's back to your communication, then communication, then communication. But from a board perspective, we love to be told the good news and know that administration is equipping and empowering its staff to handle concerns and questions and communicating them correctly. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think you're building a good picture there because if you're going to connect the three things that we've said already, it really is building a consistent sort of view of what does that look like.
Great.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think, I guess the key word I was thinking besides communication is harmony between our families, our staff, the constituents, team members, the board. And I think the things that we've, that we've run into has been maybe transparency, communications, and just staying on top. I think personally, for me, it's hard when I'm getting news of something from, you know, parents.
You didn't want that to be the first time.
And I'm thinking, it's not the first time I wanted to hear it. Exactly, I was just trying to think of another word. And I think the hard thing is, I feel like that we have to, we have to run faster ahead to maybe solve or get some answers because we don't know fully what just happened. So I think sometimes just building the harmony between, I mean, some of the things that you've answered here is showing that you have a great and a deep concern for bridging the gap and bringing that to the table with students that, for a sense of belonging, for, you know, some of the things that you've talked about, different programs that you've run, is kind of bridging that gap and making sure everybody is included in the decision-making and hearing the voices, which is what we need to hear. We need the voices of the people and so that we know that we're on track. And I know sometimes we have to make some hard decisions, but in a perfect world, there's that balance there. But I do agree, I think it's communication is huge, and then the rest of it kind of falls into place as well because you're building trust and you're, it's transparency. I like some of the reports that you mentioned too, that you've done with some of the team members that you, you know, have brought to the table and in the steps that you've taken to ensure that people are very well informed in what's going on in their communities.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have another question?
I don't. I, I'm not, I just wanted to ask the one question. I thought it was really important to get that perspective, and I appreciate the way that you've shared. Thank you.
Okay. I hope I didn't cut anybody off that wanted to say something, but I just wanted to make sure if you had a chance to ask another question, if you had one.
I was going to say, I didn't see a day where we were doing this. That was going all right.
Okay, well, then I guess at this time, if you would like to offer a closing statement, you may do so.
Okay, all right, thank you. And again, I really thank you for, you know, having me here tonight. Every day is a blessing, and I certainly feel blessed to be sitting here in front of you. This is my first in-person interview for, you know, this level of position, so it was very interesting coming into the situation, so I appreciate you having me. I'm very confident that we can be a great team of eight. You know, leadership is when competence and character come together, and I think that, you know, through our conversations, that you'll see that in me as you, you know, dig and talk to people. I know something good, I've already done that, and I think that you'll see that in me. I value relationships, teamwork, really listening to people, and I recognize, you know, the position that I'm in and I have the ability to influence others, and I want to do that with this team of eight. Of course, those are a really great place. I think through partnerships, as we've talked about a little bit here, the listening to students and staff, we can continue to be greater yet. One of the things that I'm very proud of is I've been able to establish some outstanding relationships all across the state of Michigan, coming in from somebody that's been in Oakland County. I've worked with the Kent ISD as well, county ISD, have a lot of connections as far as resources and have courage and connections to really reach out and ask people, you know, to help support. Our state likely will face some financial challenges, probably some political challenges. I agree, the last five years have been really something, right? Well, I've been doing this before, so that's all I know. And so people know what I'm in, what I'm like in crisis, and I think that's when you really see the character in somebody, when you're in times of crisis. So ask all the questions that you want of others that I've worked with because that'll tell you everything about me. I really enjoy, think it's important to collaborate with students, with staff, with parents, businesses, businesses have been something that's really important to me. We have a really great supportive community, but we had no partnerships. And I feel like we have some really good partnerships currently, and I would love to continue to build that here. When I look at the candidate profile, I'm doing those things that the staff wants, that the students want, that you want, that the community wants. I'm doing those things and I live those things, and so I feel really good about that each time I read that. It really is a strength for me as to why I'm here. I've worked at most levels in a school district, most departments. I understand the work that happens in those departments and frankly, probably can do a lot of that work, but I know as my, don't get too worried, those of you that are doing the work, I know as an administrator, as superintendent, my job is to empower those, to people that are in those positions to do the work and to support them and to reduce their barriers. I think it's also really important, if you can kind of visualize this for me, I've worked in a small district, I've worked at smaller districts, medium-sized districts, in large school districts. And if you think of downtown Ada, it's tight, it's small. And when I think, you know, if you kind of, you know, bear with me here with my story, I think if you think of navigating the downtown in Ada, it's tight. I think in a small school district, you're taking a sports car and you're zipping around and you're getting into open parking spots, you don't have much to worry about, it's quick, it's easy, you can get there. I think when you're in a medium-sized district, you're probably driving an SUV, you're a little bit more aware, not every spot's going to fit for you, there's other things that you've got to consider before you actually park yours in. I've been working in school districts, large school districts, it's like driving an 18-wheeler through the downtown. There's a lot that you have to manipulate, there's a lot that you manipulate in a good way, but that you've got to consider as you try to find that parking spot, as you try to take a right, like, all the decisions that you're making, there's a lot that goes into driving an 18-wheeler through the tight downtown. And humbly, I would tell you that I've been doing that well for the last four years in Lake Warren. This position is a perfect combination for me, other than this microphone. It's a perfect combination for me and for my professional career to continue that in an outstanding school district as well as a personal enhancement. This is all about me getting back to West Michigan and working in a, in a school district that is great, like the one that I'm in. And this is that school district, you have not seen my name anywhere else, this is the only school district I'm interested in working in, very interested in being back in West Michigan. So I look forward to continuing our conversation and thank you for having so much.
All right, thank you very much. We really appreciate your interesting position and for coming out and spending your time interviewing with us, and we will be in touch.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll do like a seven-minute break here.
Thanks so much.
How are you?
Hey, my daughter.
How are you?
Oh, yeah, you're picking some ideas.
Thank you for what you do.
Very welcome.
And if you could settle over to the desk.
There's some decisions.
I think I'll get you a chance.
But there's pictures, kids, I know you're, I recommend you.
I have to finalize.
See if I can fix that microphone.
Is it just from the push out here?
Something if I make it taller and point it down?
Not my world. I don't know.
I think.
I truly, it's not a bad, I see it.
No, I haven't called it.
But yeah, yeah, how are you?
Yeah.
Right, I'm sorry.
I'm jacked up.
I didn't, yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I'll check with him.
I didn't know, I'll wait until you.
Is that the other?
That's the, it's the.
Thank you for thinking of us.
to interview from the center.
Okay. It's been so cute.
How are you?
Yes, yes. You would expect, you would expect.
What was the time gap?
Anyway, here's a question. If we can one-on-one doing that, so.
I saw them, they were a little different because they were kind of.
I was waiting up today. There's a meeting for my daughter. I mean, tomorrow, but I was like, I've been so. But anyway, so I don't, I'd like to.
I don't need ten of them.
Oh, my daughter's.
I know. I'm just gonna sit. What's up?
All right, so.
She's kissing it.
I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make staff charts report.
I look salty. A little hypertension?
Hey, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce Mr. Al Cummins. He comes to us as the Assistant Superintendent at Greenville.
All right, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to welcome you to Forest Hills Public Schools. I appreciate your patience, I know we're running about 10 minutes behind schedule, but I think that's not too bad. So, a little bit about the format tonight, the interview may take up to about 75 minutes. For the end, you'll be able to ask the Board questions if you have any questions and you will also have the opportunity to make a closing statement if you like. With that, I have an opening statement, which is choosing our next superintendent is a responsibility of critical importance for this Board. We know that being the superintendent of a K-12 public school is an enormous and unique job. We need to find the right person for this moment and for the future to lead our district. We are ready and excited to learn as much about you as we can during this interview process. And the Board has also appreciated the input of staff and community and everybody that has been involved so far. And with that being said, I will lead off with the very first question. We have not, while we've all had the opportunity to look over your application materials, those in the audience have not. So, could you please briefly review your background and share what causes you to be interested in this position at this point in your career?
Thank you. Well, first of all, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. The role of a Board is huge. You guys spend a lot of time and energy in public education, so first of all, thank you and then it's an honor to be here. You guys have some great candidates and it's an honor to be one of them, so I appreciate that. My background, I actually grew up in Eastern Oregon in a small town in Eastern Oregon, which is very unique, and moved to Michigan when I was in high school, went to Calvin College. From there, after graduation, took a job at Tri-County Area Schools and was afforded the opportunity to teach at the elementary school. And while I was teaching at the elementary school, the principal encouraged me to look at leadership. And that's how my path to leadership began, was through his encouragement. And so, when he was gone, I began subbing in the building, like many principals do. And at the time, I was really into coaching and enjoying that. Opportunity came to high school, to go to the high school, so I went on to the high school and taught at the high school for four years, after seven years at the elementary school. And the elementary I was at at Tri-County opened up and they offered me the principal position there at a K-3 building. So, I went back and was the principal and it was actually very fortunate, the staff really wanted me to come back and encouraged me to come back as the principal. I did that for two years. We were a school, of the schools in elementary in our district, we were one of the lower performing and in two years, we had changed that around and we were one of the higher performing. At that time, I was sitting on interview committee, much like you are, to become the, to interview curriculum directors. And as we were going through, we got done and many of the staff were like, "We're not sure, we're not sure." And I began asking questions and answering questions and a colleague of mine said, "Why don't you just be the curriculum director?" And so, I became the curriculum director. So, that's how I moved into central office. As I was doing that, our superintendent decided to retire and the Board asked me to move into superintendency. I spent 12 and a half years at Tri-County as a superintendent. It was a great opportunity to help bring our district together. We have eight small communities and so we had to understand what it looked like to be Tri-County versus all the separate communities that were there. In the meantime, the Board and myself worked on a vision of really doing something the Board had wanted to do since the inception of Tri-County and that was to build a central campus. And so, we were able to pass a bond and build a new elementary school that brought our elementary schools together and complete that project of a central campus. Outside of, we have early childhood left and the admin building to get there, but that's an opportunity. So, how I got here today, really brief, you know, my wife is an excellent employee. She worked for GSK and we were looking to move to North Carolina through happenings that did not occur. And I had announced my retirement to Tri-County because we were gonna be moving to North Carolina for her work. And through that opportunity, things changed, obviously, the Board is already in process of a search. And at that time, I had a few phone calls, I was told, "Once you look at retiring, you're gonna get a lot of calls." And so, I did, I had a few calls to consult. I was working, I worked with university on a project that I'm working with them on called Roadmaps. It's a curriculum project. At the same time, Greenville Public Schools was looking for a new curriculum director. When they were not able to find it, the superintendent there called me and said, "Would you please come over?" And I said, "Oh, let me think about it and look into different things." And he said, "Can I take you to lunch?" Once you're taking to lunch, it's over, right? So, we went to lunch, had a great conversation. He was a great leader and got the opportunity to be Assistant Superintendent at Greenville and it's been a good experience to go in there and learn. I think that as educators, getting to other districts and see what's happening, big or small, is important. We do so much in education and we watch universities do this. We watch them go to each other and say, "What research are you doing? What research are you doing? How do we connect those so we have great research?" I'd love to see us do that more in education, public education, because I think that opportunity's out there. With that being said, we knew we were staying in Michigan and as opportunities came up and Forest Hills being one of them, we were looking very specifically at certain communities that we could move to, be a part of the community and raise our son. And Forest Hills really fit that bill. Our son is a second grader, he's currently at Tri-County. His teacher is gracious enough to pick him up and drive him every day, so we thank her. But in a great class, a great community, still at Tri-County, but next year, we'll have to look for something different. And this opportunity, as well as him being at a school like Forest Hills, would be good for him and for our family. So, it kind of combined that way and say, "This is a good opportunity for us as a family." So, that's how we got here today.
I was lost in thought there. All right, given your research and what you know of our district, what do you believe are the two or three most critical long-term priorities that you would be addressing? How would your background and skills help us address these issues?
Okay, so, a couple of critical issues and then how I can support that. I would say the, a couple of critical issues as I look is, since 2012, there's been 1,000 students out of less Forest Hills Public Schools, okay? And I think that's something we're gonna have to address. Now, interestingly, as I look at the data, it's not all flowing into other public schools. However, I do have the Brighton question because there's obviously some sort of partnership with Brighton because I see a multitude of kids going to Brighton. So, I know there's some sort of virtual or some sort of connection there that I understand. However, there's gotta be a group of kids going to or making a choice somewhere else. Now, part of that is birth rate in Kent County is down, we know that, right? But we've got another, we've got another concern where students are choosing something different, okay? And we need to be the choice school. And the academic success and the opportunities within Forest Hills, I think it should be the choice school. So, I think that's some learning. Now, I can only dig so deep in there. My concept would be first, I think from my understanding is, I need to understand why, you know, where they're coming from, why. I need to meet with those families, survey those families to understand that and then understand how we can be that choice school. Some things that we can also do is be more proactive. I think schools don't market enough, you know, I think that the, you know, you look at the charter schools and they're sending flyers all over to everybody saying, "Come here." And I think we're gonna have to understand that we're in a different environment, that there is some competition out there where people are going to other schools. So, advertising marketing is a good thing to do for public schools. I was excited to see our communication directors that can help support that, okay? I think, I think the other one is unique and similar to Tri-County is that three entities you have. You know, you've got Eastern, Central, and Northern. And each are their own unique district and makes it kind of a school here and school here and school here. However, how do we become us? You know, how do we become a district that says, "We're Forest Hills?" Now, that can be taken from different avenues of, if one flyer's performing, we can all go visit, we support each other, we cheer each other. But also, I think curriculum and instruction-wise, I can see where there's certain opportunities at different schools that may not be available at other schools. So, how do we align that? And it gets in by our systems, our processes, where if you go to Forest Hills, we know you get the Forest Hills education and we have some similar opportunities out and with advantage building. I think my experience at Tri-County being a curriculum director and now at Greenville being a curriculum director can help support aligning that. The great news is, you guys have some great people in your curriculum department that'd be great to collaborate with and build that culture of, "We're Forest Hills," you know, and have that us mentality, if you resign and sign, if you have a me, we, us. You know, how do we move to that us mentality as Forest Hills?
All right, effective and timely communication is vital to the success of a school district. Please describe the type of communication students, staff, and parents should expect to receive from you.
Yeah, that's such a, that's such a big question in public schools. If you don't mind, there's kind of this idea that, you've gotta be, you know, transparent on everything and there's some truth to that, but we also understand when and how we communicate as well. You know, it's kind of like the three bears, you know, it's too cold, it's too hot, how do you get it's just right? Okay, and that can be tough. If we do too much and we over-say, I've seen it go quickly to a horse equation because, you know, more assumptions are made. If there's too little, you have the same thing, more assumptions are made. So, we've gotta find that just right. I think that my years of experience, I've kind of learned what to say and how to say it. And the other one with that is if we have to say a. And the other one with that is if we have to say a little, we make sure we say, "Please look for follow-up," okay? So that we, and then we follow through on that, okay? Because that's the key is, at this time, we can share, "Please look for." Now, there's other things we have to look at too with social media communication because that's going to go to a broad group, okay? And when we get to that broad group, we want to, we want to spread it. And those are things, you know, good news, great news, you know, positives, shout-outs. Or sometimes we've got to get to our parents and say, "Hey, we got an important email to send, please go look at it." But we want that to go directly to the people that we're talking to, and that's our parents or our community, for a specific matter. We have to watch tone too, okay? So I will say, my channels of communication have been different. Sometimes video. Video is incredibly powerful now because it is the avenue that most of our parents, especially our young parents, are using is video. So sometimes we have to do video because they'll watch a video. If you send an email, hey, I'm reading it, okay? If we do create an email, we've got to make sure we're looking at the tone of the reader, okay? So often, when I do use or have an email I'm going to send out to parents, you know, I'm going to look at that and have a parent read it and say, "How did you read this?" Okay? Because often we have parents that are teachers in our community, that work in the offices, that can read that and that, okay? I think it's very important to have communication with staff and making sure that they understand where we're going and what we're doing, okay? Staff need to know that. If they're wondering, again, we make assumptions and sometimes we don't make the positive assumption, right? So I think it's important that we have regular communication with staff. Currently, what we do is, we do communications on paycheck Fridays, you know, so that they know that there's something coming from the different department heads to the staff about important things happening. And then it's very consistent as well, communication to our staff. And I've also done staff collaboration, you know, emails with our president or something like that, saying, "Here's what we're working on together," to show that we're working on it together. So I think that shows that collaborative approach too, that if you do it with staff, sometimes that can be important. With students, I do think they need to hear from our leadership, okay? And they need to hear what's happening. More with students, I've done two things. One is, I've brought groups in as conversation pieces with groups, kind of like, "Talk to me. What are you guys hearing? What are you seeing? What are you..." You know, and having that piece of communication and having them move out. Now, at Forest Hills, there's a little more population. Bringing three groups together may be tougher, but I still think the opportunity to work with kids and get to two-way communication is important here. What are you seeing? What are you hearing that I need to understand as we continue to work with the greater community? And I go back to parents as well, just quickly, is, I think having a key communicator group, and I'm not sure if we have one, I didn't see one on the website, but having a key communicator group with parents is also good, that you have that sit-down conversation with parents, hear what they're hearing, hear what they're saying. But it's also good to do and say, "Here's what the district is working on. Here's where the district is going." And then they can help get the correct message out to other parents.
Excellent, thanks. What, you touched on this a little bit already. What do you think are the unique challenges of leading a district that has three high schools like we have? And how would you address some of those challenges?
Yeah, that's a good question, CJ. I think that, you know, I think first, I want to address the fact we've got to celebrate, okay? And we need to do that. Our kids need to hear, "You guys are rocking it." When you look at scores, and you guys are scoring in the 78 percentile in some areas in math and ELA, like, our kids need to hear that because they're not hearing it enough in their personal lives, okay? And so let's start, let's start there. I also think it's important, like I said, to bring kids in and let's hear from them. What do they see? Where do they want to go? But if I were to go back and pull away and say, "I think it's going to be the work here that's going to do that." How do we create a compelling vision, okay, where our leadership says, "We want to go get that." Bono Bro's song is one of the most popular songs, and then he says, "You have to have vision over visibility," okay? And so often, our staff, our admin are seeing the visible, what happens in the building every day with our kids. It's our responsibility to say, "What's the vision and how do we move it there?" And so I think we've got to come together and create that vision, create that next level of where we're going to go. At Tri-County, it was 2013 that we said, "We want to pass a bond, we want to create a central campus." It was 2013, and the fall of '23 is when we go open that building, okay? Maybe we can move a little quicker, maybe we can't, I don't know. But that was the timeline that it ended up happening for us. But if we can create that compelling vision and create the work and the roadmap that needs to get done to get to that vision, we're going to do better, right? It also is easier for me then to work with administration saying, "Hey, here's where we need to go. Here's the roadmap up here we can get there, okay? Here's the small steps incrementally that we are going to do as a team in order to be successful in this." Okay? And part of that is going to be, how do we then bring three schools and make sure we have that community feel of an us environment?
Thank you. Can you please give us an example of a successful education initiative or a program you have initiated in your career and what were the results?
Yeah, that's a good one right now. And if you've seen the news, I don't know if you guys saw the news on Tri-County, but I had a teacher come to me and it was probably 13 or 14, she says, "We need to start STEM." And I, "Hold on." Okay? And so, and she goes, "No, can we sit down and talk about this?" Absolutely, sit down and talk. So we sat down and talked and she brought some plans together to look at STEM. And so we then worked with our curriculum council and said, "How do we introduce STEM?" And I would say, "Plan, plan, 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 implement." Okay? Well, I'll throw one in there, pilot, implement. So we said, "Okay, next year, we're going to pilot STEM at our 3.5 building." And so we began working on the curriculum, designing the 3.5 curriculum, and she was real hot. Now, I get to be superintendent curriculum, so I get to walk with this. By 2018, we are MASP School of Excellence for STEM, okay? From there, we said, "Now, how do we expand this?" So we began a 6.8 STEM. We really want to get K-2, but it was an easier shift to 6.8. And so we got to a 3.8 STEM program, and now we have a K-8 STEM program. I'm excited to say, and I don't know if my son's behind me, but I know that my son, who is a sports nut, his favorite class is STEM. His favorite class is STEM every single day, every single Friday, I should say. But he loves it because we're doing robots, we're doing critical thinking problems and, you know, that learning, that we're taking the learning from the classroom and using it multiple ways within there. Our middle school has just recently, they applied to the Samsung Award nationally, of which there were, I think, five schools in the state of Michigan. They are now the state champion in Michigan and up for one of the top 12 schools in the nation for winning that STEM project, bringing about $100,000 in grants. I think they've already brought about $20,000 in grants. More than that, that, by kicking off that STEM program, Grand Valley asked me to be on the West Michigan STEM Committee, so I'm part of that. And so it was a real, it's been a real positive, so much so that I think if you went to Tri-County and said, "Hey, you know, STEM's costing a lot of money," I think we'd have parents come out of the woodwork and say, "You better keep it." But it was a great project, a great initiative. And I would say, we did a lot of planning. You also have to think about the money that's going to go toward that. You have to think about how it works with the curriculum you have, how you fit it into the time that you have, because time is part of a big portion of what we do. But you also have to look, if it's a good opportunity for kids, we need to look at it, how do we, how do we make that work for our kids? So I think STEM was one of the great successes that we've had at Tri-County in building a curriculum that has been successful.
What opportunities do you believe budget limitations present? In tough financial times, what are your top three priorities?
Yeah, you know, budget's always challenging and we're going to hit this here. And if you don't mind, I'm going to speak maybe a little bit more directly to Forest Hills because I think you guys are in a unique position. And doing my research, you guys are in a challenge where, I don't know if you've seen it, but you're seeing a little bit of uptick in your at-risk and your Title I students, okay? And even, I'm going to say poverty students, you're ticking up. However, the dollars aren't there, okay? I'm going to tell you, you receive about the same amount of Title I and at-risk funds as we do at Greenville. We have 3,500 students, 3,600 students, okay? So I think, when we talk about funding, I think the fact that there's a lot of categoricals. And what I mean by that for those listening is, there's a lot of things in the budget that are, you can kind of apply for, or if you have this, then you can get it. If you get this, and it's based on certain factors or, you know, that you can receive that money. And right now, you're not getting those dollars. And so, while people sit there and look at Forest Hills and say, "Oh, you know, they got all this money." Well, when you start taking out those things, it starts leveling the playing field, okay? Especially when we're talking about at-risk students or Title I students who may need extra support, right? So I think we still have to continue to work on the finances, and I think that's a challenge, not only for Forest Hills, but for the state, that we continue to do that. My opinion is, I think we need to reduce some of the categoricals. We need to put them in a foundational allowance for all kids, okay? And I'll say with that, the pension liability is another big one. If anybody's a business owner and you're paying 28 cents on the dollar for their 401K, you're going to sink pretty quick. And that's what we're doing in public education. It's almost 28 cents, it might even be 29 cents, I'm sure Julie's telling, you've got the number in her head. But it's like 28, 29 cents on the dollar that we're paying for the pension. That's a lot of dollars we're putting there. If we can reduce the pension liability, okay, we can take those dollars and put them back in education and back into the classroom. And so I think that's another, you know, a big area in education that we have to look at. The other one, if we're talking about education, is teachers. We've got to increase, we've got to increase our school of teachers. I love the fact that you guys have a teacher program, I figure which school it's at, but, you know, the educator shortage is real, you know? So how do we at Forest Hills then get to the colleges and say, "If you have a student teacher, we want him." Why not have a six-month interview, right? Why not take our best teachers and train those teachers so they're ready when they enter the classroom? So that educator shortage, it's real, it's going to grow. Looking at Forest Hills data, you don't have a lot in the 27 to 28 years, but I'll tell you, you got a lot in the 2025. So we're talking in five years, we're going to start seeing teachers roll out. We've got to have teachers to replace them. So educator shortage is a big concern as we continue to move forward. Love the talent together, grow your own programs. I think those are opportunities for us to take staff who are great, parapros, who may want to become teachers, and say, "Here's an opportunity to go become a teacher for free." We even got professionals in our area that I bet, if they knew about Talent Together, may say, "Yeah, I'll go do that. I can become a teacher and it's not going to cost me anything." Yeah, join the talent together. The court, I think, is already up, so you have to, that's your school hard, but that's a great opportunity.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So my question is, from the perspective of planning, setting direction for our district, how do you think it would best incorporate the input of community members, staff, students, teachers, our constituents?
First of all, it's incredibly important that we have that and understand here from them. In my experience, there's the two ways that I've seen it work the best. One is your survey, okay? And making sure you're getting your survey broad to everybody and also having a quality survey, okay? Which takes time. Now, the negative to many quality surveys, if my wife prances behind me, I'll understand because she's a researcher and builds surveys, they get long, okay? So how do you keep them concise where people want to answer the questions in the survey and it's pertinent information for us to set vision, okay? I think the other one I mentioned is that key communicator group. I think it's a great opportunity to speak, a key communicator group for students and for parents. Having those grouped for your meeting regularly with and really hearing the regular feedback is important. And then also, you know, community forums that you can host. We've hosted many community forums that have been helping us be successful. I think, you know, especially, you know, you go through a bond, you host them. But when we set vision, sometimes we don't, okay? So we can host them for both. I've enjoyed the model when building the strategic plan, that we invite community members to be a part of it, you know? And they're in the room with us, you know, and they're helping us and asking the questions and looking at the data with us and saying, "Okay, here's where we're going to go." Now, the final products, we're probably not created at that moment, but you're getting a lot of feedback there. They're actually reviewing the survey of the community with you as well and saying, because sometimes it helps to say, you know, "This is what this means." Because sometimes we assume or make an intention of what it means and apparently, "No, no, no, I think what they're saying is this." So I think that also helps me get to that final point of creating that strategic plan, have parents with you reviewing that data, reviewing that survey, and providing that feedback. So it's along the way, it's not just, "Here's a survey, oh, thank you, here we go." Or, "Here's a forum, here's the information, here you go." It's, "Hey, we're going to have you in the process all the way through."
Okay.
Thank you.
Would you please describe your leadership experience working with diverse constituents, thinking social, cultural, economic diversity? And tell us a little bit about how you've worked to develop educational equity and a culture of inclusion for all.
Yeah. I, first of all, I appreciate your guys' values that you guys have created. I read those online and you guys have done a nice job creating those values. I think the first thing we have to do is, is we have to recognize humanness. We're humans, okay? We are created, we may have different beliefs, but we're humans, and we have to respect that first. Now, we're getting into this idea of beliefs and different maybe talents or understanding. My leadership around it, obviously, has been mostly around socioeconomic, socioeconomic. Okay? And I've dealt with that quite a bit throughout my career. But I've also had the opportunity, I spent nine years working, my wife and I went out to British Columbia and worked at a small camp. It's called Copper Island, section of Little Island called Zardis Island off of Vancouver Island with First Nations, that's in Canada, Native Americans here. And it was interesting entering their culture because that's one of the things that I had to learn, is I had to enter their culture, okay? Now, I'm going to use a simple one. Kind wasn't a big thing for them. Kind's a big thing for me, okay? So I had to learn that it's okay to not be unkind, okay? Now, I know that sounds simple when we talk about diversity and equity, but it became important because you're going to gain that respect and you understand and say, "I understand where you're at" versus, "I want you to understand where I'm at," okay? So the other, I think, difficulty with equity and equality is there's some different areas to talk about there. You know, equity, we're talking about what might be fair and may not be equal, okay? And that becomes a big thing, you know? Because my son and I go to a Tigers game and we're in standing room only, you know, and we're both on a two-foot platform and I'm 6'2", I can still see. He can't, but we're equal at that time, okay? So sometimes individual needs, we need to make sure we give them more support in their individual needs so that they can be equal and have that same equity, okay? I think in schools, that's really hard right now, okay? Because there's so much coming at us and saying, "This is what it is, this is what you ought to do." And I want to say that I think I appreciate the work that you guys have forwarded on this already. It's happened, you've had conversations around it, that's evident to me. But I think it's important that we understand where people are, where they're coming from, understand, you know, their point of view, okay? And, but also understand that there is policy and procedure that we have to stay within as we play within the line of supporting equity and inclusion, okay? I hope that resonates a little bit.
What has been the most unpopular administrative decision you've had to make and how did you handle the reaction to this decision?
I know that probably many people here have, well, I know you've looked at my LinkedIn profile, it was way up the last few weeks. So, but also, if you Google Tri-County, you're going to see some story. Probably the toughest one was, when we had that $427 cut, we're talking about, "What do we cut? What do we cut?" So we said, "We were able to go to single bus runs." So we found, okay? That was a tough one because when we went to those single bus runs, it just wasn't the right decision for the school and for the community. Um, I, I also will say that we had to go back and listen to our community and they're like, this isn't working. They were right. And we had to switch back and listen to them and say, hey, we need to go back to double bus runs. Okay? I'm gonna give you one other one that was a big one, and this is more of going back to the vision. The other big one that we had to do, we had a K-2 building, we had two K, we take three building, a four, five building, and then we had another building that was shrinking in population. Okay? So at one set of elementary schools, I'm running classes of 30 to 33, and at the other one, I'm running classes of 16. We made the decision to go K-2 and 3-5. Okay? Now, you're gonna catch the story here when you say, what do we do down the road? So we went K-2 and 3-5. We balanced the class sizes. Man, when we made that switch, you're talking about combining schools, everything else, and talk about culture. You're taking the culture of one building and the culture of other buildings, and which culture do you go with? And, and trying to bring staff together. Um, staff were frustrated, parents were frustrated because also now we're taking kids from one town to another town and back and forth. Um, it wasn't popular. However, we stayed the course and we understood also the purpose of some of the vision we had of how do we bring our community together. When we went for the bond, our parents were the ones saying, this is working. Having the horizontal curriculum and alignment of our kids being together is working. And so they chose at that time to say, we wanna build one full, big elementary where all our K-5 kids are at. Okay? So back to your question, I had that, I had decisions that we made that were, were a struggle, but we also had decisions we made that we said, if we can save the course here, it's gonna help us meet the vision and where we're gonna go.
Thank you. Uh, next, what role does the school district play in student mental health and wellbeing? And please describe for us your experience in these areas specifically.
Yeah. This is big. Like, I could do a presentation on this, I think, and just finish this tonight. Since 2009, most of us having with us, the world's changed. Okay? The access to, um, social media is there every minute. Okay? Um, and we're finding more and more that that access is, is what, one of the reasons we are seeing an increase in mental health. Okay? Um, I just actually listened to a podcast on this and it was, it was very well done by a professor out of Wheaton College. But, but what I would say is, in my experiences, first thing we have to do is make our environment welcoming. Okay? When, when kids walk in the door, they're greeted and often by staff because I don't know what a student may have done or said. Um, so we, we had it here and I saw this year was, you know, you have the be-nice group. Uh, I think those are important groups to establish. Um, we also had a group called Cool to Be Kind. Okay? And, and their, their whole initiative was, how do we get things around the building to treat each other well? Um, how do we understand, you know, that, that we may not understand what another student went through before at their home? Um, or their environment, or what they might be struggling with? Right? Because let's face it, we have kids who will get a B on a test and be like, yay, super, I'm a rock star. And you get a kid with an A minus on the test and it's, we're like, nope. Right? So we have to create an environment that's welcoming to students. And, and as staff, we're the, we're the doorkeeper to that. I really, really enjoy what Caption Kids Hearts does. Okay? Um, they create those environments, they talk about how to do that, they talk about, how do you, how do you just shake a student's hands? Part of the reason we do that in the hallway is, we shake their hands so we might know where they're at. Because often if I greet a student at the door, I can know where they're at. I can understand maybe where, I can also help. Um, go back to budget, the budget question too. I, I think we do have to look at the opportunity, how we provide more counselors and social workers within our schools. Okay? Um, it's, it's every year, and I believe it's on this year, on the governor's proposal of trying to add, this is the ratio we should have. The funding hasn't met that yet. Um, so how do we provide support? Well, if we can't provide those supports, where can we go get? You know, you have the foundation here. Spectrum or Corwell Health is actually offering online counseling, right, in schools as supportive. Um, how do we communicate with parents if we know their child's struggling? You know, what, what does that look like? Um, how do we, and, and surround that situation as well? Um, so, um, my experience is that has, is, I'm gonna say this, you can't have enough right now. Um, but I think that truly our instructional staff care about kids. I believe are, are some of the first initiative people that can help support those kids. But then I think we also have to help the kids learn how to support each other. And then we also need resources, okay? That kids can, can get to. Um, I think you have Forest Bueller area too that can be supportive. Um, I, I used to sit on the, the West Michigan Suicide Prevention Committee. You know, we had a lot of these conversations, um, just, just how do we look at this and annoying, kids are hurting every day? And it is different. I didn't go home when I had a bad day at school and it stayed with me all night. Right? These kids are going home and they go to their room, right? We used to go to the room, shut our door, and they're like, mom, they're all there, right? They goes, they go home and they're bringing what with them? They're bringing that social media with them and going, here and back to it. Um, so I think it's very important we address and we also have to start realizing, we're gonna have to start addressing this in younger ages because we're seeing it there. So it's gotta be part of what we do and we can also incorporate that a little bit into our curriculum. And then we can incorporate that into, into, you know, things that we teach. You know, we're, we're reading a book with our child right now, you know, The Pitch Counts or something like that. And, you know, that, that book does a great job exploring, like, how do you handle adversity or failure in sports? There are opportunities to speak into that within the curriculum as well.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, what strategies do you use to recruit and retain talented, diverse teaching and administrative staff?
Um, I'm very fortunate, um, I'm gonna go administration, staff first. I was very fortunate, my administration staff for the most part stayed and I don't wanna say that because they were bad because they actually gave me a really, like, working material. Um, so I think that becomes a key component. You've gotta enjoy coming to work, okay? And, um, especially with administration, when they feel micromanaged, that becomes a challenge. And, and I would say with administration, when we're collaborating and working together and problem solving together, work's more enjoyable. Okay? Um, and, and so I think we do have to, we have to create also leadership pathways. I mean, we have a district of, what, seven, eight hundred or more staff members? I have to believe some of them want to become leaders in the district. So how do we create a mentorship program or a leadership program where we say, here's opportunities to become leaders within the district and teach them what it looks like, what it feels like, give them opportunities, um, to be a leader so that we can kinda have that drill our own program? Um, because leaders retire as well. Okay? Um, I will share that I, I appreciate some of the connections I've had. For 13 years of being a student in West Michigan, there's a lot of connections I've had. So when leadership came available, I made phone calls. Okay? Um, I'm gonna throw out a name. You know, when Breakthrough came available, I said, hi, Steve, I know you, Steve Seward is a good friend. I said, I know you're probably not gonna do this. He said, actually, I'll take a look at it. And Steve Seward came up and became our Breakthrough Director. I can tell you, I know Steve does consulting within your district. Okay? So making that phone call is also important if you know the leaders, to recruit them and bring them in. Okay? I think with staff, I'm gonna go the first thing, the biggest thing we have to do as staff is communicate. Okay? Our staff are working very hard and they're, and they're diligently working in front of our students every day. We have to create the environment again, like I said, as administrators, they want to be, they want to stay, they wanna be a part of the great things happening. Um, and, and so retention is the first speed of providing, you know, that family environment, that school environment. And I have to say, with, with schools, when you get hired by a school, you're gonna raise your family yourself and your family there. Tri-County did that for me, you know, and is currently raising my child, hopefully he'll be here, um, and you can finish raising him. But, um, with me, but no, but, but I think that you have to realize that when you're, when you're a teacher, that, that you're walking in an environment that these are gonna become your friends, your colleagues, and, and we've got a, we have to welcome them too now. Okay? I'm gonna go back to what I said earlier. I think we have a huge opportunity to also partner with some colleges and universities and get on the forefront of getting staff here. I'm on the Fair State Advisory Board for their Education Department. That's also helped us get Fair Estates to, we used to take all of the pre-teachers, used to come to Tri-County. Well, they came to Tri-County and guess what they wanted exactly? They wanted, they wanted to do student teaching there. And then they wanted to come there and possibly teach. So those are opportunities that we can make is connecting with colleges and universities and saying, hey, we're the choice school in N County. Come here and student teach, we'll help you. I'm gonna say this as well. When we do get a new teacher, let's have a good program to make sure they're walking in successfully. I've watched too many young teachers come in and they say, what's the curriculum? And you're like, well, we use this. Here's your book. And that puts a lot of load on a teacher. Good mentoring teachers, having a solid curriculum, say, here's your curriculum, here's your pacing guides, here's your assessments. It's all aligned, I'm here to support you. It really helped those students grow, or those young teachers grow. Um, lastly, I like last classroom for young teachers to help them grow as well. That we're getting in there and we're saying, let's go see some teachers. What did you see? What can you bring back to your, what can you bring back to your classroom and use within your classroom environment? Um, so last classrooms are a great opportunity to grow young teachers. As you grow those teachers, we're gonna go back to, we're gonna remain them. If we can grow, we can remain them.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. Um, so we believe in offering quality programs in everything we do, including the fine arts, um, career technical, um, education, athletics. How do you develop curriculum and opportunities for students that equitably meet the needs of those kids while maintaining quality throughout all of those different programs?
Yeah, you guys offer a lot of opportunity for kids, that's just, I mean, that's, which is great. So as, as you sit there and look, you say, okay, what if we're gonna add to it? You know, how do you, how do you look at that? I think, is that the gist of what I'm hearing, kind of the question?
Yeah, just how, how do we maintain that all of those programs function well?
Yes.
Um, with the variety of them that we have?
Yeah. Um, I, I think, I think as a leader, you have to, you have to make sure that you're, you are investing and showing the investment in each of those. Okay? We go back to becoming inequitable, we've seen that happen in school districts. Um, you know, I, I think the big one, let's face it, you know, the athletic can say, athletics everything, the band people say, athletics gets everything. Right? Um, but I think communicating with both groups and being a part of both groups is, is important to have those conversations. As we're talking academics, I think it's important that we establish and make sure that we have, you know, we have solid curriculum, um, it's aligned, we have good teachers. And I think one of the hard things now, you talk about, um, you know, you know, your woodshops and, and your trades programs. There's not many colleges offering those now. It's like, we've gotta make sure we're recruiting so we can keep those programs up. Right? Um, it, it's just, it, it's, it's important that, it's important to maintain those, the identities of those as well and that they're successful. Okay? You look at, you look at Forest Hills and all the opportunities they have in music and the arts, it's astounding. I mean, we're getting down to fifth and sixth grade where they're, you know, having opportunity in orchestra or choir and, and you're building those up. You know, you gotta be careful when those time comes and cuts that you're not removing those. I think that's one of the proud things I can say at Tri-County is when, when other schools were cutting programs, you said, no, we're gonna keep that. In fact, we added to it choir, we did not have choir, we added choir to it. Okay? Specifically, we felt the same, it would bring people in. When I, when you look at the curriculum and say, if we're gonna develop new programs, we're gonna look at a curriculum, I use the scale model, we're gonna look at the standards, we're gonna look at assessments, we're gonna look at the curriculum, which would be made of a resource. Okay? We're gonna look at the learner environment. Is it, is it work and doesn't fit within our system and what we're going to, what we need to do? Okay? Uh, because sometimes ideas come to us too and say, yeah, that may not fit, or it may take away from another program. And I think that can become a concern when you start adding programs is, don't lose something by adding as well. Um, I'm not sure how I can answer the final part of this question because I'm just diving into it. And that is, I can see that some of your different high schools offer different programs. Okay? And, and I'm, I'm wondering, I'm, I'm sure there's opportunity to move kids around, but I don't schedule it the same. And so how do you also make sure that if I have, if I have a student that maybe, I'm gonna use this one, at Forest Hills Eastern, who wants to take sports journalism, well, that's only offered over at Forest Hills Central right now. Okay? So do we move the kid over there? Do we offer it there? I, I think those are some of the challenges that, that we've gotta continue to look at and, and provide, make sure either that child can get there, or maybe it's time to offer it at the other school as well. But maintaining high, high-level programs, it really is. And especially for you, I love all the AP offerings you guys have. It's phenomenal. You guys are doing an excellent job.
All right. You've already touched on this a bit, but if you could describe your experiences with mileage renewal, fund proposals, sinking funds, and maybe describe why they were successful, or why not if you had unsuccessful ones in past?
I'll say both of those. Um, so, um, let's start with sinking fund. Okay? Your sinking fund is, is your, you're building site fund, sometimes they call it. But that's, that's the ability to use those funds to just maintain and keep your buildings moving. Um, it can be used for repair, cannot necessarily be, do a little bit of new build, but it's kinda gotta be an addition. But there's a lot of opportunities, including with a sinking fund. Now you can purchase buses, you can purchase, it used to be with technology, you could just purchase like, you know, the internet fiber line running in the ceiling here. Now you can actually purchase one-to-one computers. Okay? So with the expansion of that, there's more opportunities for schools to look at sinking funds as an opportunity to take maybe some of the pressure off the operations department and, you know, keep it in the classroom as well. So there's weird opportunities. I would also say with sinking fund, um, good opportunity to look at like energy efficiency in buildings, if we haven't hit that, HVAC systems. Um, and, and there are projects you can do year to year. The great thing about sinking funds is there are pay-as-you-go, there's no interest, we're not borrowing money from the bank and then we're paying the interest on it. Um, so it, it really is, um, because of the expansion of it, a good opportunity for a community to have a sinking fund. Uh, we passed a one-and-a-half mil sinking fund in Tri-County. Um, the reason we did, our mills had dropped from almost seven to 2.8. We needed to get them up, so we did a five-year sinking fund, and then we'll get to the bond here. Uh, we actually combined that with our bond to, so we could get more dollars to, to do what we wanted to do at the central campus. Um, you know, bonds were borrowing, they're bigger projects typically that we're going to do. Um, you know, but, but typically when we're getting into bonds now, you know, I didn't mention sinking funds. Sinking funds, you can also, you know, kinda do design build a little bit more, which is a little more cost-effective. But when we get to a bond, we're doing more, we need the architect, we need the engineer, we need the CM. I think you guys are working with the 08K, we do them as well, really appreciated their work. Um, but we're typically doing bigger projects. Okay? Um, and, and I think you, I know you just passed a 345 million bond and, and doing a lot of work within your schools. Um, you know, for us, we combined that sinking fund with the bond and, and passed that. Um, but it did take a couple times for us to do that, I will share that. Um, you know, our process was that we, we wanted to be upfront, we had multiple community, community meetings. We did go for, the first time, we, we increased it by a mil. And the, the, the community vote was no. And we have to realize that vote, that vote is like a survey, it's, it's information back to you. Okay? And so while we take it personally, that was the information we needed. So we took the information back, we, we sat down, we listened. Um, for us, we had a pretty strong no group. Um, so myself and the board president called them and said, hey, would you come and meet with us? And we sat down and had a conversation, why no? Help us understand where you're at. Uh, we had about a two-hour conversation. I'm not gonna say we changed their vote. Right? But I will say, as a public, we definitely softened the tone and we were able to pass that, um, you know, after that meeting. Um, so I, I, I think that, you know, with, with the bond, again, they're bigger projects, but you are borrowing dollars and you're paying those back. One of the key factors, whether you're doing bond or sinking fund, is making sure you're monitoring when those dollars fall off or when those mills fall off within your community. So recently, we're seeing those high increases in home values. But what that does is, is those go up, you're not allowed to, to take in more than what the, the bond payment is. Okay? So if you start doing that, you have to lower your mills. So you've gotta work a little bit and say, if that starts to happen, how are we gonna handle that? Because what you don't wanna do is have, if your mills are six, you don't wanna do what happened at us and go down to 2.8. Because it's gonna be hard to get back to six at that point. And you have to communicate really well with your community on why you might look at another bond or maybe turn those dollars into sinking fund if needed in order to sustain what we have, what we're doing and the opportunities that reach of this.
Thank you. Could you provide us with an example of a time in your career when you made a mistake, received constructive feedback, and were asked to take corrective action? What process and communication plan did you implement and what was the outcome? I know you've already talked a little bit about the busting one.
The busting one would be the big one.
The busting one, you've got, you know, a no vote on the bond issue. You can pick one of those to expand on or is there any else?
If I can go back to the busting one maybe and expand on that, you know, uh, yeah, I, I'll, I'll, maybe I'll dive a little more into it. And I was a young superintendent at the time, but, you know, I went to the, the bus garage and said, hey, we need 25 buses to run the routes. Yep, we got them. Um, I never forget the phone call I got because I was in Ann Arbor and I got a phone call saying, hey, 12 of our buses are red pack. What? But what she didn't tell me, were those buses were like, from like, by the way, this is like 2011, it was like 1998 to 2000 buses. I didn't do my diligence saying that next level question. It doesn't matter, we might have 25 buses. Are the 25 buses in good position that we can operate? So that was one where, now I gotta go back to community and say, okay, we did double bus runs, that's not right. We've got buses that are red pack, we've gotta get buses and get them fixed. So we ended up fortunately, by the way, at that time you could buy buses because the economy was down. So we ended up buying like six buses in January, fortunately they had them, were able to get them to us. Um, but, but, but that error, I would say, I wanna say that really taught me that when you're a superintendent and you're exploring those types of concepts, back to that, you better plan, you better plan, you better plan, you better look at data, you better make sure you dot your Ts and cross your Is and make sure that if we're gonna implement this, you're ready to do it. So we did have sent community, uh, we had letters out to community. Um, and you know what? When I'm going to a basketball game or I was in the community, you know, they're like, ah, that's a bad idea. You can't sit there and go, well, no, you say, you're right, it was, I own it, but here's what we're gonna do about it. Um, and, and I think that, that helps show the integrity that you have in making sure you're making the right choice in the future. Uh, and, and I think that, that helps show the integrity that you have in making sure you're making the right choice in the future.
No, and for me, how would you evaluate, knowing what you know about Forest Hills, our climate and culture as it sits currently? And how does a superintendent help to improve the climate and culture of the district?
I, I think, first of all, I think it's key to establish that as a leader, um, and, and I think you're doing that with a couple of groups. Um, well, I'll say three. One, I think is important that as a board, that you're working together, okay? Um, it would be my hope that as a board, that we might have some workshops, get to know each other, understand where things are, understand where we're going, understand your direction. I can maybe share a little bit, but that, that, the, the community, the staff, the people are saying, no, they're working together, okay? Um, in situations where it seems like board superintendent aren't doing that, um, culture can, can, can drop pretty quickly, okay? Um, I'll go second. I think working with the admin and working on that admin culture piece is key. Making sure that we're collaborating, we're listening together, and, and I'll say it again, I have found that when we have created a, a good vision, and those buildings have good visions on where to go, there are more buttons for what we're gonna do and why we're going to do it, okay? And, and we can make movement at that point. Um, and, and I know this sounds odd, but I, I found it very impactful when I worked well with our E A Association. And I have, I had a great relationship. We use interest-based bargaining, I'm not sure what you use here, I'm gonna tell you, I would, I, I highly recommend it, I really enjoy interest-based bargaining. Uh, it's an opportunity to have real conversation, to try to hear both stories, to see the data around the stories. Um, and, and so, when we began that process, I think we helped build some, some identity of, I wasn't against you, I just needed to hear you, and we can assume positive intention at that point as well. Um, and we also were able to pass some communication, like I said earlier, on together, okay? It wasn't, it wasn't this, it was, okay, we're, we're working together here and moving toward the same idea. Um, my last sessions were with like, we're like, well, we want to do this stuff, okay, how are we gonna do that? Your contract only allows this, but we need to change the contract then. We're having those types of conversations where they're telling me how they need to change the contract, and, and, you know, it, it just became a, a better environment for us. It, it seemed like when we were leaving the room, you know, and then coming back, I wasn't positive. Um, so I, I think working with that E A can be important as well, and then you're gonna continue to work down to the staff, to the community, you need to be visible, okay? I understand at Forest Hills, I can't be at everything, okay? It's, it's, there's too many Friday night games or Tuesday night games and band concerts and kid concerts and opportunities, you know, and so I, I've got a family I've got to raise as well. Uh, but when you are visible in the community, you know, that you're talking to people and you're not just standing in the corner that you introduce yourself, okay? So I'm getting a little bit into how you're gonna meet people, I understand, but at the same token, you know, that, that helps build that culture. I think ultimately, I'm gonna go back to, you know, I want to see, when, when you say as you look at things, we've got to understand how we're gonna take these three unique identities and, and say, but we're Forest Hills. So if you're gonna ask me where I see a little bit of separation, that's probably where I've seen and heard that a little bit of, of that, you know, we're Eastern, we're Northern, we're Central, great. My brother and I were, he was him and I was me, and trust me, we could headbutt pretty well, but you know, we're supporting each other pretty strong too. So I think that's one of the things that we want to do, is not see each other as brother and sister all the time and saying, hey, we might be brother and sister at times, but at the same time, we're all together in the same family. And, and so let's move forward as a family that way. Um, so that would be another area that I think the climate and culture we can, we can continue to grow with.
Uh, would you please explain what your plan might be to implement a strategic plan?
Yeah. Um, I see that you guys have worked on vision and mission and your guiding principles. Um, I, I, my, my vision would be to work with the board at a workshop, I mentioned this earlier, that we would sit down and have a conversation, how we work, work forward with that. Um, we developed typically, uh, we, I was on our third strategic plan up in Tri-County, um, have used two different consultants with that process. Um, and I think typically bringing in a consultant is wise, um, to help support that. Um, there are multiple companies that do that, My Leadership, M A S B, um, trying to think, there's another one that we're using at Green Hill right now. Um, but, you know, there's multiple companies that do that, and, and bringing them in because they have a good process. And, and they have a process that's gonna help us sit down as a board, understand where we look at things, understand where our community looks at things, understand where our staff is looking at things, and then try to create those, and I'm gonna say three to five kind of major goal areas that we want to focus on, and then under that, we're gonna have key initiatives and, or objectives that we're going to do. Now, I think one of the scary things we talk, talk about in strategic plan, you know, the, the principal lights go on and go, oh no, another thing. When we think about building a strategic plan, we've got to be careful that it's not another thing for our staff and for our principals. It can't be more work, because they already have my tips that are out there that they're working on, okay? Which is the, their continuous improvement plan for their school improvement. How do we make sure that, that we align this from, this is the strategic plan, this is our vision, this is where we're going, and then it aligns down to each of the buildings so we can say, we're all kind of moving in the same direction? By the way, go back to our question, that can help with culture and climate as well, because we now say, oh yeah, we're all moving and doing the same, same direction. Uh, my encouragement too would be, you know, looking at like a multi-tiered systems and support system, where we have the right teams in each building, or as a district, in our leadership team, that, that we're having conversation around the data to make sure we're moving in those directions, okay? Um, multi-tiered systems and supports is not just about, oh, let's help the bottom 25, it's great for that too, okay? But it also, those teams can be your key initiators within doing your strategic plan as well.
Wonderful. I have a long question. Okay, now superintendents are often faced with the challenge of making decisions when there is no clear right answer, and members of the community are split on the right path forward. Let's talk about a time when you were faced with a difficult decision, where you knew there would be a group of people unhappy with your decision, no matter what you chose to do. How did you go about making that decision and getting people on board with the direction you determined was best?
Can we skip the COVID years?
Oh, we want to address it.
Yeah, because those were being said to us. Um, I, wait. I, I think that, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go there because I, I think in COVID, it was, it was a split time. I mean, that's, I mean, it was one of the toughest times as a superintendent, um, and I really hope my wife's shaking her head behind me. She has to come home every night. There were such different beliefs in that, that I knew when we made decisions, that people were going to disagree with that, okay? And I knew that, that we had to handle that. So I, I would say two things. When we make those decisions, we're gonna have to communicate it well, and why we're making the decision. And this is an area that you're gonna have to be maybe more transparent, remember I talked earlier about less transparent or more transparent? We're gonna be more transparent while we made the decision. I'm also gonna go back to, you know, as a superintendent, I want a cabinet that I can sit with, that's gonna help me with that process and that decision-making conversation, okay? But that cabinet is not saying, well, you're the smartest person in the room, you figure it out, you know, you're getting the big bucks, you know, we need collaboration, we need conversation around it, what the impact's gonna be, how, maybe how groups respond, so that we can pre-plan who we need to be and meet with and talk to about that, okay? Um, so when some of those decisions were made, I kind of knew some of the stakeholders that I needed to call and say, hey, here's the decision that we made, and here's why we made it. Would you want to come in and talk to me, or you go to the phone call, okay? Those aren't easy phone calls, and, and to pick up that call and talk to that person that you know is going to disagree with you is tough. Um, but if, if, if they feel heard, okay, and, and you can share with them, I was at least able to tone down maybe the rhetoric, what was happening. I'm not gonna say that, I gotta believe somewhere else, I don't know what it's called, if you have your Facebook parents group, you know, I'm not gonna say it's not gonna get on that, okay? And they're not gonna be upset. Um, but also, we also took some of the opportunity to look at some of those and say, work back on the phone and call on some of them, I see you posting, talk to me about where you're at, okay? Um, I think the really challenge there was, when everything came out, they said, oh, these are only recommendations. We're like, you know, they're kind of like, that was the hard part, come back even after that, after we sent out the communication, now people that were required, and then out to recommendation all the time. That was the hard part, coming back to those same people and going, I, I'm just finding this out, you know, and, and try to keep your integrity. Um, it, it's tough though. It is really tough and challenging at those times. Um, but we have to step forward as leaders. Um, I'll, I'll use the common phrase, you, you've got to enter the stadium. You've got to be the man in the arena or the woman in the arena that's gonna stand there and say, here's what we're doing online, and are you willing to step into that? Stop. And that was a very difficult time.
Thank you. What is the biggest risk you have taken to do what's right for children?
Who? Um, I'm gonna go to some part of our, our socioeconomic, um, status, students. I, I think that when, when we were looking at things at, at Tri-County, we were, we, what phrase? When you're doing your title dollars, there's what's called the TIS, which means that you have to equitably divide those dollars between your schools. We had two elementary, two ele-, three elementary schools, and we had a middle school, okay? And the middle school is bigger than those elementary schools, so based on our Title I school selection, they got the most dollars, okay? The problem wasn't there, the problem wasn't, it was the foundation of K1 and 2 that we needed to address. But I went to the school in the community and said, we're pulling those dollars and we're putting them down here. We're gonna make sure our kids get it early to improve their academics. And I'll tell you what, that really rocked both of some of the community that lost, I mean, staff members down, okay? And, and so, that was a tough decision because it was dollars that had always been there, it's always the way we've done it, okay? And now we're moving them down and saying, but this might be a better opportunity. Um, it took about three years to walk through that before people started going, you're right, okay? We started seeing our K1, 2 kids start performing better, both on our local test, and then that started showing through. I, I can remember going to the staff at the time, so N W A scores, we were about 35% proficient on N W A, and I stood in front of staffs, said, two years on, 50%? We can't do it, and they gave, they're handing me research, like, the test is false, and it, you know, it doesn't work, but we'll never do this. We did that change, and in two years, we were meeting 50%, 50% of our students made the 50th percentile in N W A. Um, you know, and so then, I will say, and then we had to say, well, what other opportunities can we get on middle school? So we were able, unfortunately, at-risk dollars started coming up, and we were able to boost some support back there. That was a difficult decision, it really was, um, because you're taking, when you take dollars away from a school, or support program away from a school, back to your question earlier, it really rocks the boat. Um, but at the same time, you have to understand why you're doing it. We did it to support those kids and make sure they can be successful.
This is my favorite question. If you have to dream big, what would secondary education look like? What are, and what are the major obstacles you see to achieving that?
I think there's huge opportunities for secondary education right now. Um, and I, I can talk, a, a few of them might be courses, like, I, I really want to see A I. I talked to the business leaders, you know what the business leaders were saying? It's better know A I. When they come out and see that's what's being used. Now, I understand, I'm not talking A I like I can write my paper with A I. I'm talking about how is it used within the business setting. Um, I would say that if I'm looking at secondary education, I would be looking at high-level learning, where students are the locus of control in the classroom. Where we hear students talk, where we have students engage. If you go to like Schmoker's work, he says, we gotta read, we gotta read high-level critical thinking material, we've got to be able to write it, and we've got to be able to, to speak it. And I think if we can create a, a school environment where that's the case, you have more engaging classrooms as well. Guess what that does? That, that increases discipline, okay? It also increases not wanting kids to want to be in those type of environments. We're increasing attendance, okay? We're increasing academic outcomes. Um, so, it may be a little different than you might hear, but I think that looking at that type of instructional practice, if I were to walk in a classroom, and I've been to a few, where you just see the kids totally engaged in a conversation around the content, and the teacher's walking around, and the kids are doing the work, man, there's a secondary class I want to be a part of. And, and I, I just, you know, so, I, that's tough to do. And it can't always be done, I'm not saying every day it's done. Um, but if I'm looking at a secondary environment, I'd look at that. The second piece I would look at is opportunities, which you have a lot. I just think the more opportunities kids have at secondary level, the more options and availability there are for classes. Um, you know, and just poking, I mentioned A I, um, I'll mention a few others. Um, you know, I, I think there's some opportunity for maybe seeing some college courses being caught here, like above and beyond what our AP courses are. Um, so, um, I love, I love your E L A work, you guys are starting to get into journalism. I think humanities is one that we, we could talk about bringing back. Not many schools are offering humanities. Um, and I even, I, I was looking at some schools, some high-level schools, uh, that, they, they have AP history and they have AP, I'm sorry, AP English and AP History back-to-back, and kind of run it as a humanities class that way. I think those are unique opportunities to provide in a district to say, hey, we're gonna take, we're gonna take the learning, and we're gonna, we're gonna shift it up even higher, okay? Uh, but there, there's some college-level courses I think we could plug into Forest Hills as well, where we can say, hey, you've had AP Calc or whatever, now let's get to your next level of a college course within, within, you know, within Forest Hills. And I think we have schools around us who would help support that. Soon collaboration is big. I really think it is.
Okay, Megan. How do you ensure that people know and understand that you have heard them?
Well, I'll repeat your question. How do you know people are understanding you? I think, I think paraphrasing, pausing and paraphrasing are big, okay? Um, and, and so, of course, I've been through cognitive coaching, um, I've been through it after schools, and I think those are key factors that, that you can, you can do, and that, that you know you're listened to, when someone can pause and paraphrase, and then ask questions, okay? When, when you're telling people, they don't feel heard, and, and so we've got to make sure that we're asking questions, asking good questions. Um, sometimes I know questions can come off belittling too, so we have to make sure that it's an appropriate question. Um, but I think we've got to make sure that, and, and sometimes you've got to go to the point and say, you know, am I hearing you right? And just ask them point-blank, you know, if that's the case. I think what's harder is, so much of what we get in education is written communication, whether it be through email or through a survey, that becomes tougher. And that's where, again, I'll go back, sometimes you gotta pick up the phone and call, or ask your parents, your community, and say, hey, we got these statements, what does that mean? You know, help us understand it. Um, those can be other ways that you can, you can make sure that you're hearing that. Emails are tough because sometimes, I can remember I got an email from a teacher, I'm like, I thought they were blasting me, and they're like, whoa, that's not what I was trying to do, Mr. Dummies. And so, you know, I, sometimes you gotta read an email, you gotta pause and say, go back to, just say, help me understand what you're trying to say here. You know, obviously, in emails, you know, I, I set the tone of the email when I read it. Um, so, so sometimes you gotta be aware of that, but I really believe in that concept of pause, paraphrase, really helps support people being, making sure that they've been heard and they've been understood. That doesn't mean that I agree with them, because that's a different conversation. Yep.
All right, so what are the key elements you need to establish and maintain a good working relationship between you and us, the board?
Um, I think communication is key. Um, I think working with our, our president and our board, one of the things that was key for me was, I didn't want you surprised. If I was, if you were surprised, I hope I was surprised, okay? Because if I had to call you and say, yeah, I knew about that, and you weren't aware, that makes it really tough for you, okay? So I think, you know, consistent key communication is important. Um, and, and you gotta be careful because, you know, at, at first I started that concept of, whoa, we email every Friday, but when it happens on Monday, you hear about it by Tuesday, okay? So it's gotta be timely communication with the board. Um, I'm also big on, on working with the board and getting to know you, I think that there's opportunities, one-on-one, two-on, I gotta get to, we gotta get to know each other. That, that becomes a, a big factor in our work together, is knowing who we are and how we work. Um, but as well as, I, we did the workshop model, which was valuable to us, where we sat down and, you know, it was, it was the work of the board time, where we were able to sit down and say, okay, what is our work? By the time we got to the board meeting, we've had good conversation around it, our work's been done, if we need that further conversation, definitely do, okay? Don't want to have the community think, well, you guys don't say anything to me, that's not, not what we're saying, but know that those workshops, we're gonna get the deep conversation of what we're working on. It's also an opportunity for the board to say, to myself or cabinet, and say, hey, go look into this. Now, other ways to do that are committee meetings, obviously, you can do that through committee meetings and say, you know, but that's an opportunity for us to work together as well. Um, but I'll, I'll tell you that in my working with board, communication and timely communication and making sure you're aware of that. I also felt that in my role, having a good relationship with the board president was key, uh, because often you're calling and saying, hey, here's what we're dealing with. And sometimes the board president was calling everybody, or, you know, just, I've got to watch communication for, you know, for our reasons. Um, but that becomes really important, is that we have that key communication, no surprises, we're getting to know each other. And then I'll go back to, we gotta be on the same page of the vision and the mission and the work we're doing together, okay? Um, so that, that becomes key.
All right, thank you. And that is the official end of the grilling portion. Um, so now is the time, if you have any questions that you would like to ask us?
Because I brought it up so much, okay? I'm curious, where are you guys at with your strategic plan? Are you in the middle of one? Have we not started, or where? I mean, I, I saw, hey, you got your vision, you know, um, you know, I have all, all learners, you know, achieving individual potential, I love it, you know, but- But you guide your mission, you guide your guiding principles. Have you developed a three-to-five-year strategic plan with some set goals? Or is that something that is next steps?
That is actually next steps. We had started the process with an outside consultant. And we did surveys, we did community forums, we did all those types of things to get a lot of feedback. And then our superintendent retired.
Okay.
And we brought in an interim superintendent. And we were like, "This is not the right time to be moving forward with a strategic plan. That's something that we would want to do with the new superintendent to make sure that everybody's on the same page."
That makes sense. That makes sense. I appreciate that. Yeah, and that's something that I, my conversation is, is I'm passionate about, really does help set direction for the work that the superintendent has to do. By the way, you guys have done a very good job, I believe, building your org structure around that as well as your expectation of what board responsibility is and superintendent responsibility is. That if we can develop that, you know, it can be, it can be a healthy move for Forest Hills. I think second question, you know, I wanna be, I wanna be president of Forest Hills, but I also need to be president at home. How do you help the superintendent balance work-life balance? Where, you know, there's three districts here that you can work 14 hours a day very easily. How have you helped the superintendent say, "Hey, work-life balance?" How do you, what's your reciprocal there?
I've been around a really long time. This has been a beautiful board that always values family first. So I love that you said, we all love that you said you try to be attentive to your community. You know how to do that. You don't have to go out to the best ballgame, football game, stadium, concerts, theater performances. And when there's something important or something that you can resonate with, that's a good time to go out and touch base. But yeah, if you're not good in your place with your people and in your home, you're not communicating to us either. Can I say that, Patrick?
Yeah. Well, I can't help but share it. My first, so I've been on the board over five years now. And it was within the first meeting or second meeting where it became very clear to me of the board's support for the superintendent's health and personal care. Because that was the conversation too, about, one of the most important things about setting up a communications department was to stop having him do so much of what other people should be doing. And, you know, have him in the case-specific person not suggesting that our superintendent must be mad. But, but that impressed me right off the bat because that was the tone that was set is, "We're a team of eight and we do care about each other's health and our end lives and wanna make sure that that message comes across clearly." I mean, my time on this board, it sure did come across.
Yeah, I think that for your understanding, I was a team of eight and then went back to my office and ended up a team of one. You know, I'm curriculum and doing finance and, you know, leading those different environments depends, helps me understand things. But it also led to sometimes we get a late board meeting and I got an early A to pod finance. You know, they become a challenge. So I appreciate your leadership in providing a cabinet, you know, that provides support to yourself and to the community and the superintendent.
Do you have any other questions? Okay. At this time then, if you would like to make a closing statement, you may do so.
Yeah, I, first of all, thank you. Okay? I can't say enough. And people sitting behind you have been here for maybe one or two of these. So, you know, I appreciate that. But I know the time and energy you're putting into not only this search but from the last year. So I appreciate you inviting me here. I'm humbled to be here. This is a good opportunity for myself and my family. I hope tonight that I have shown my understanding of education, my willingness to look at opportunity for Forest Hills to grow as well as what I can provide and bring to Forest Hills. And again, you know, having a, having a second grader, this is a community that we would, we would love to live in, to be a part of, for him to be educated in and to grow in. And I think together, we could establish a quality vision, a quality strategic plan and meet those goals, objectives. You have many great things going in there. I wanna say that. I really am impressed with all the work you're doing. And we're talking tweaks and changes. Okay? Not, not overhauls. Right? And so, how do we keep, how do we keep the good good and make the good great at that point? And so, there's gonna be strategic leadership, but I also understand and very, very clear that there's also gonna have points where we're gonna have to address some things. We're gonna hit climate and culture. We're gonna break things together. We can't always behave how we behave and we can't always do what we've done. We've gotta look at what is a fresh eye see. But I wanna come here and be a learner. I think that's been the great thing I went to Greenville. I was able to learn very quickly. And so I wanna be a learner of what you are doing in the new establishment. But ultimately, I'll help you understand this. I am here for kids. Okay? It's very important for me to see kids be successful. It's very important for me, back to your question, that kids feel valued, that they feel heard, that they feel this is a place where we're welcomed in. Man, I just, I couldn't imagine more of a kid who goes, "I love Forest Hills because I love them every day." And that's the environment. I wanna see kids succeed. Whether it be academically, socially, emotionally, on the athletic field and music. And I think we have the opportunity to buy that. And I think I can be a leader that can help support and bring that to Forest Hills.
All right, thank you very much. We really appreciate you coming in today. And I know it's kind of hard to schedule these things in with everybody's hectic lives, so appreciate the time. And we will be very soon in touch.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw you both looking over jealous. I jumped over to breathe. Scott's got to go wash. I'm eating some cookies.
I was, I was.
You know, just like the last guy said, you realize it hurts.
I was just making sure there was a left or a right out.
That's true. She looked over and I was like, "Oh." That's probably for tomorrow. I'll be back.
There you go.
This one I think is quite fair.
That one that troubled me was the Great Amish. Yes, yes. That one was really troubling to me. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I'm sitting here going, "Oh, wait."
Yes, I've been in meeting and went saying, "Remind me."
We're gonna adjourn this meeting?
I was, um, I was playing.
I do a lot.
With my neighbors. He has like 10 of us.
That's so lame.
There's a rumor that he, I don't know, that he may or may not be involved.
Oh, it's coming up now.
May or may not be excited about that. It's maybe good.
Oh, it's coming, it's coming. I just wanted to know. Just so we forget, I wanted to.
It would be better to just channel it, just video it.
Yeah. Which is so sad.
I know. I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
It's always awkward.
They bang that gavel next.
You doing your homework?
Yeah.
You're on the first interview. What was your decision? Get the library.
I just got a second.
That was a great question.
And that's okay? Okay, good.
Need to take those, sir?
Yeah, I got the shirts.
All right, thank you. All right.
There are a couple more here. I'm going to show her where Ellen is.
I'm not getting that. Have a good night.
That's because we got extra.
Got you tomorrow.
Yeah, we're not supposed to take notes on them.
Well, I wasn't here to hear it, so I.
Yeah, that one, the total.
Hallie, I just think she was writing down what the answer was.
Yeah, she was taking her own notes. But a couple of them are quiet.
Well, I did that on mine too. I would like humor.
We just see.
No, they're going in different. And now it's sort of both coming.
Oh, my gosh. I, you don't have, I would just propose.
I'd be the same.
Nope, that one.
Okay, they're all the same. There you go.
That one, oh, I'm sorry.
You saw that already.
Nope, this is the other one. Same person.
Oh.
Oh, 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 oh. Same thing with the highlighting this way? No, this is.
Oh, you're on that.
We have the, oh, sorry.
We have the, oh, sorry.
Are we on dumpster?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I just, I feel like I might word here, so just put, put them in a folder. So if you look at things to sort of help inform what's going on tomorrow. I know you have the other format, please just come and do it.
Yes, yes.
I don't really supposed to remember. Did you, are you going to give us like a summary of these?
I usually don't.
I mean, that's something that we could look at, like, at the end, that, that we give back to.
I will, I will have them with me at all times.
Do you want me, okay. I just think there's some of these questions that come in here that.
Well, we can have, we can have them in everything and send it out to everybody.
But then you additionally have the half pieces of paper with the question ideas, right?
Right.
Could probably be derived from a lot of their comments.
It could be, it could be.
My bell's here. Yeah, that would be nice, because I think.
That, you can reread them, if you would like. Um, and he has, remembering, going to try to make a decision Wednesday night of what finals could be that.
That would be nice, because I mean, I always have time to do it, you know, like.
Yeah, we'll, we'll give everything, we'll give all.
As long as we, they'll come Wednesday evening and are ready to have that discussion. We're not going to be like, I'm going to scroll back and look through notes.
No, so Wednesday night, after the last interview, you'll have more change to read. You only have one hand.
Right, yeah.
So hopefully, we'll stay up, up to date on, on the first four candidates. Then, um, it doesn't hurt to give yourself a few minutes just to reflect your thoughts. Whether you want to jot down some notes, whether you want to go back to your notebook and look at the profile that was developed and try to do some matching, who makes this. One board wanted us to do a rubric of that, um, profile, so that we can start marking things off. But the problem is, maybe you might put one of those items on a higher scale than Kristen does and Hallie does. What was the most important one for you, okay? That's why I think it's good just to have the overall profile. That's my opinion.
So here's a thought, we're not, we don't have online evidence of stuff unveiled, just get copies and bring us these sheets tomorrow. And then after the Tuesday interview, so you can make those copies and bring them to you Wednesday.
Well, I, there's, there's nothing.
No, but everything, we're just trying to make it as perfectly correct as possible.
Yeah, I don't, there's really nothing.
No, no, this is.
This is all done in a public meeting. Okay, so, but in public.
Yeah.
So, if I had, um, spent, you know, might be a better process for you individually than what your time is scheduled is for you. That way you're on your own, do that.
Whatever you think is.
Doesn't have to be have, you mean.
Well, you were chatting.
And, this is a question to have on the agenda, obviously, for things, I don't know if we can, but as, we're still in our meeting. Is there any ability to have discussion with you about our first two people tonight, what we heard? None of it happened until all five. I don't want you, in your own mind, you might have them ranked, wanted to. Sure, yeah, yeah, I mean, and not to do that, but just things you noticed or anything that's not. Yeah.
We love to talk to people in the audience and a lot of your composure, avoid.
No, it's okay to, I mean, some of you already have it, but it's, it's fairly common to have some of that take place. We don't want to be exclusive, we want to be. So, it's a lesson that I can put our inputs of what I need to work. But ultimately, there's seven votes. Two of us here don't get a vote.
Well, I haven't seen this one. No, it's coming here when, yeah, it's you. Bye-bye CJ. I did look at some, but I don't know, I didn't want to.
Other credits? What's his face, David? Matt? What's his face? John. David. The ones from middle Seattle. Um, wait, what's the ones from middle school? I mean, from middle school.
Yeah, Jeff's, I'm going to tell him. Kedavista was here and that force was here.
Yep. Brad was there.
So other events went ahead?
Yes. There was music. Everything.
Pyrrhic here, Pyrrhic was here. Wasn't Pyrrhic here?
Yes.
So, before you close down, I think, is there anything else you need from me? Did you feel like it went smooth enough as far as going from questions to? And you can see them rotate around the table just fine and that, so. If done did well.
You've done it well.
Yeah, thank you. So. No, everybody's still right here. Yeah. Isn't that be the last one?
Yes.
No, there's two that are just like that.
Oh, there's two?
Yeah.
Should be an American song.
These are all good.
There's so many, so many interesting questions. What would it look like if you were on? Oh, I did. Six. I saw this. Is that it? Well, now we got the questions. We don't see the questions.
No, the questions aren't.
All right, these two only have six.
Secret.
Figure out if you can get it.
If it's green. Or if there's no green. See whenever everybody's looking to ask additional.
There's Maggie, there's me.
No, just read.
Mary, CJ, how, who's Maggie? Those two both are Mary.
I've seen those. We think that's a phase turn.
We're going to Mary.
I, I heard.
Okay. I somewhat.
I might have missed that. People definitely put questions on votes. Are we leaving these folders?
I will, yeah, we'll send those to all.
Yeah, that's it. Got you, okay. I'll get it back. We'll get, the same notes though, right? Back tomorrow night, like the, you did.
I'm not going to do anything with your folder other than collect.
All right, so we'll still have tonight's candidates in here. Yep.
And then would you make sure I'm included on the screen?
Absolutely, yep.
I mean, I'm sure you can keep this, but they go there.
We're just nice, it is the same question, it's the same. I haven't seen them anyway, but you know.
So often they're conducted board meetings in this kind of environment for fifteen years.
What?
Nah, maybe twelve years. And so often you've conducted board meetings in this environment for?
Like with the empty room.
With an empty room.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, administrators are always here.
Well, right, yeah.
Right, because that's the only way we have an audience.
But committee meetings were basically, how was that?
The answer as far as nobody would be at the board meetings, it was a perfect, it was one, it's absolutely.
I like that.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
And the sad thing is, we can't see and work anymore about things, like, that's not even a given. It's just the whole trust in the way the world is.
I think you probably could have a perfect.
Yes, and it wouldn't matter.
Your perfect isn't mine perfect, right? I, I don't know, I haven't read all the questions carefully yet.
I think every school does it a little bit different.
You know what I mean? I know, you know what I mean, because I know we have student advisory council, right?
There's student council at every place.
Right, but I'm just saying, like, like, class officers. Some of those little parties, they have.
Oh, I was here, because we did. Yeah.
What do you ask about student advisory council?
We have to go down elected officers.
No, I'll keep those. Hallie just wanted to take a look at.
Oh, okay.
I usually just keep those and, as we develop the last interview. You'll see it probably in the last, I mean, not in that exact order, but. Because my guess is you'll submit some questions very simply to those. For my, you know, time, you have some questions that are very similar to the.
Okay, do I have them all?
I'll follow.
Other questions on Bell?
Okay. Ben, is there any other business before the board? Hearing none, meeting's adjourned.